Welcome to this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council meeting for Wednesday, April the 6th, and we will begin this evening by asking our clerk if she will please call the roll.
Yeah, Councilmember Rosenberg?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and to summarize our agenda, we have approval of minutes for January the 5th, our organizational meeting. That will be followed by reports from council members. We will have one report from the mayor and city offices this evening on the new revenue package proposal with Mayor John Hamilton, followed by council committee reports, and then our first opportunity for public comment. We are in a hybrid meeting situation. We have members of the public here in chambers, and we also may have people joining us via Zoom. And so when we get there, we will provide instructions on how we can negotiate the first public comment period. That will be followed by appointments to boards and commissions, and then we get into our legislation for second readings and resolutions, which include ordinance 22-05 to vacate public parcels regarding to 16.5-foot-wide alley segments located between West First Street, West Second Street, South Rogers Street, and South Morton Street, City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission petitioner, followed by ordinance 22-06 to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a Historic District regarding the Johnsons Creamery Historic District. The legislations for first readings this evening will include ordinance 22-12 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water Rate Adjustment, ordinance 22-13 authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana General Obligation Bonds, Series 2022, to provide funds to finance the costs of certain capital improvements, including costs incurred in connection with and on account of the issuance of the bonds and appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of such bonds, all for the purpose of promoting climate change preparedness and implementing equity and quality of life improvements for all city residents. Ordinance 22-14 approving the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District Bonds, Series 2022, to provide funds to finance the costs of certain capital improvements for park purposes, including costs incurred in connection with and on account of the issuance of the bonds, all for the purpose of promoting climate change preparedness and implementing equity and quality of life improvements for all city residents. That will be followed by additional public comment, our second period, and then our council schedule will be discussed before we adjourn for the evening. So let us now move on to the approval of our minutes.
I move the approval of the council organizational minutes of January 5th, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any corrections that need to be made to these minutes? Any suggestions? All right, with that, all in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are approved. Now we are going to move on to council member reports, and I will begin on my left with Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that my monthly constituent meeting will be this Saturday, April 8th, April 9th, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and it will be in person for the first time in over two years in the McCloskey Room here in City Hall. So I invite all members of the public, but especially those of you who live in District 5, to attend, and we'll talk about the mayor's revenue plan and whatever else you'd like to talk about related to city issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would just like everyone to remember tomorrow that New Hope is having their kickoff and their ribbon cutting. You know, members of Mayor Hamilton will be there, and it's a great event. It's a great thing that they're opening that new facility, so if you can, get out there and support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, just one update that my constituent meeting this month, I've moved up a week to next Monday, April 11th, 5:30 p.m. Normally, I'm on the third Monday, but I have a conflict this month, so moving it a week earlier, next Monday, 5:30 p.m. Still on Zoom for the time being, though I'm open to feedback from residents and constituents on that, if they would prefer hybrid or in-person meetings. I have a feeling that some folks who attend appreciate the accessibility of video meetings, but open to feedback on that as well. So similar to my colleague, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, look forward to discussing the mayor's revenue proposal and other legislation before the council. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Rosenberg?
I just wanted to mention my constituent meeting. That's the second Tuesday in April, so it is next Tuesday, April 12th at 5:30 p.m. I too am still on Zoom. This month, we have folks from the People's Market coming to talk about what they do, how people can get involved and help. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
No report.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. No report.
And Councilmembers Scambalory?
No report, thank you.
All right, and none for me. So at this time, we will introduce Mayor John Hamilton for the mayor and city offices report this evening. Welcome.
Thank you very much for being together with you in person, face-to-face. It's very nice. Welcome to all here, here in person, and those virtually as well, and I just want to appreciate the chance to be with you. Bloomington is at a pivot point. You've all heard me describe pressing needs confronting us several times. I'll begin tonight with a different voice. Mayor Tommy Allison made the following comments in a 1984 memo to City Council that first established the local option income tax. Quote, "No government official wants to raise taxes which are unnecessary, but our first obligation is to provide basic services to our citizens. We must maintain the high quality of our police and fire services. We must maintain our streets, curbs, sidewalks, our equipment inventory, and our city facilities." Close quote. This 1984 income tax of 0.5% was raised another 0.5% five years later in a 1989 council action, bringing that basic lit local income tax to 1% some 30 years ago, where it stayed until 2016, when the Local Income Tax Council raised a 0.25% public safety lit to support critical investments in that sector. For three decades, together, we have provided those essential services, but in order to continue to do so, with several revenue sources declining, with city services and facilities expanding, with pressure on our employees and our expenses increasing, we must have additional revenue to continue the excellence that we have achieved and that our residents expect. In addition, I believe we owe current and future residents a similar obligation to invest in the future, to address challenges we see today and expect tomorrow, in particular, climate and inclusion, to assure we are addressing this changing planet and community responsibly and in ways that allow all our residents to thrive, future and present, and from whatever walk of life. That's what tonight and the next two weeks of consideration are about, meeting basic needs and meeting fundamental obligations. Tonight, I'll share briefly where we are in our recent progress together over the past few years, then we will review that process that has led us to these lit and bond proposals and the next steps. I'll be happy to address questions whenever you see fit during or thereafter, and look forward to continuing the extensive dialogue in which we have all been engaged in the past weeks and months. So just to set the table, since 2016, together, we've made great progress in our city, providing excellent services and improving opportunities for our residents. Through your support of that public safety lit in 2016, we have been able to equip and update our dispatch, police, and fire departments, and today are the only city in the state of Indiana with a nationally accredited police force and a top-ranked fire department with ISO number one, with declining crime rates and an unprecedented fifth year in a row with zero fire fatalities. By the way, these slides we'll make available tomorrow publicly. Through your support for affordable housing, through the Affordable, through the Housing Development Fund and zoning incentives and more, we have been able to expand our investments in affordable housing dramatically, resulting in 1,121 units of affordable housing over the past six years. Through your support for the Integrated Tax Increment Finance District and the Redevelopment Commission, we have been able to create the Trades District and advance Hopewell and support many other key local infrastructure investments. Our jobs and wage rates are increasing, and we have seen unprecedented private investment and public infrastructure process, progress, over $3 billion in recent years. Through your support, our Parks Department, through the years and through the bicentennial, we have been able to earn two national gold medals and expand a department the envy of most cities our size, including, of course, our largest new parks project ever, Switchyard Park. Through your support of three affiliated entities, we've seen strong growth in their impact and quality. Incremental rate adjustments at our Utilities Department have accelerated water main replacements, improved the size and quality of our wastewater plants, as well as protected the quality of our water and Lake Monroe. Bloomington Transit has attracted substantial federal support to replace buses, buying 28 new buses over the past six years, compared with only 10 in the previous six. And the Bloomington Housing Authority has dramatically accelerated the upgrades of more than 200 units of public housing, doing in about five years what was previously projected to take more than 25 years. And through your support for our solar contract, expanding investments in sustainability, we have begun implementing our first-ever Climate Action Plan. Overall, it is through this council's and your predecessors' consistent support for fiscal stewardship through all the years that we've been able to advance our community in these many ways, responsibly and proactively. The most recent investments of Recover Forward are one more example, allowing us during a pandemic and great recession to keep investing in nonprofits, our people, our employers, our basic services, to weather storms and do our job to help people thrive. Today is another step in being those good stewards and meeting those challenges and opportunities. Our fiscal condition at present is good, but not without future revenue. Two years ago, in January 2020, we previewed critical investments needed and discussed a potential lit. Then COVID hit. In 2021, we considered a lit again amid a very challenging pandemic and recession. We dedicated local reserves and then federal money to Recover Forward. The federal support from the American Rescue Plan of last year was absolutely critical to sustain our good efforts, but that was just one-time support, as you know. And finally, during deliberations for the 2022 budget, as a council, you indicated support for more public safety investments and for more regular infrastructure investments, hence our development of the General Obligation Bonds and the lit proposals we are discussing this evening. Three weeks ago, our administration shared a detailed outline of categories and programs for the lit and the bonds. We specified four key areas for lit investments. First, critical public safety investments, including staffing costs for both sworn and nonsworn personnel and major facility costs that are not covered in the 10-year PS lit capital plan. Second, investments needed to sustain other essential city services in the face of pressures on workforce costs, increasing operating and supply costs, growing general maintenance and replacement needs, as well as revenue reductions, in particular affecting information technology needs, including cybersecurity. Third, investments to prepare for and mitigate climate change and its effects locally. This includes major local investments in improved transit services, which incidentally should also help leverage significant federal funding, as well as direct investments to implement the ambitious citywide Climate Action Plan. And fourth, we outlined key lit investments needed to assure Bloomington is a place of diversity, equity, and inclusion, where all can thrive, including significant investments in affordable housing, both ownership and rental, and help for people to access jobs and careers, including in trades, for example, as infrastructure spending in coming years increases. We also establish an economic equity fund to help low-income working residents and ongoing investments to support our vital arts and local food sectors. Regarding the bonds, we committed to bring to you two $5 million bonds for your review, focused on local infrastructure needs, consistent with relevant plans like our Comprehensive Plan or Transportation Plan, including the High-Priority Bike Network, our Parks Plan, our Sustainability and Climate Action Plans. All relevant city departments scrubbed those plans in their own capacities to recommend a wide range of options, which were then prioritized by departments and by ripeness in time, and also evaluated according to their power to leverage additional funding. That very large list was winnowed to two lists presented three weeks ago, offering to council the opportunity to review and reprioritize as desired. All of this reflects our community at a pivot point. How will we come out of the pandemic and the recession, as President Biden has urged? Will we build back better? Will we keep up Bloomington's momentum? Now, since sharing that outline and all those details, we have been listening to you directly in a public council work session and through many, many individual conversations. We have heard from organizations and from individual members of the public, including through an online poll active for weeks, still open for those who can go online, with scores of people responding, and truly since January 2020, countless conversations and It's important also to note, these proposals reflect extensive public input incorporated in documents like the Climate Action Plan itself and three citywide scientific surveys, for example, reflecting the public's opinion the city should seriously address affordable housing, and our Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Plan, both updated through long public processes in the past five years. So specifically since mid-March, in reaction to our proposals, we've heard feedback, including a 1% lit rate rise seems too much. Lower it, if possible. Others strongly support a full 1%. Some wanted even greater investment in basic city services. Some wanted to reduce new investments in transit. Others said it was essential and wanted increases. Some wanted to eliminate or reduce the jobs support economic access. Others viewed that as important. Some wanted more, some wanted less, in the Economic Equity Fund. Several supported housing support, some especially for homeownership. Some wanted more Climate Action Plan direct investment. Some wanted less. Regarding the bond project, some suggested adjusting priorities. Some expressed interest in knowing what leverage the lit investments offered. Some wanted assurances of transparency in explicitly tracking lit expenditures over time. And I'll report on the lit, the public voted how to allocate among the four buckets, the four priorities. The public's vote put all four within 20 and 30%, adding up to 100. All four were within that band of 20 to 30% priority. We took all that feedback in. And before I share tonight revisions to the proposal, I just want to remind you, council and public, of our local capacity to invest. As we have discussed, our lit, our county lit, is low now, lowest among our seven contiguous counties, low statewide. We have not raised the basic lit for 30 years. When you look at our overall tax rate as a city, income and property, we are among the lowest of Indiana's large cities. We also have modest spending levels when we compare ourselves to those cities here, the general fund per capita expenditures of 20 cities. And our debt per capita is also very responsible here, the per capita debt of the 20 cities of Indiana, not counting Indianapolis, which is an unusual, of course, county-city combination. We have the capacity to support these critical investments. So based on all the input, regarding the two $5 million bonds, we have adjusted the priority list in one way, based on majority views, in the Public Works General Obligation Bond, moving the High Street project to the top of that list, as we present to you. All other projects and priorities are retained, though I will state, we are absolutely open to any and all future adjustments of priorities based on the council's directions. And again, based on feedback, and as always focused on meeting needs regarding the lit, we will advance for your review a proposal based on that March 17 outline of three weeks ago, adjusted as follows. We will propose a 0.855 percentage point increase in the lit, lower than the full 1% that some have advocated, but sufficient to meet our community's needs. This incorporates the Economic Development Lit Proposal allocated by population. We also have added an increase in essential city services of $500,000 allocated to personnel and to major expenses increases. We have adjusted with an increase in the Climate Action Plan investments of an additional $250,000, and we have adjusted with an increase of $250,000 for the Economic Equity Fund to help address any negative impacts of the lit. Also, based on your feedback, we will create a new fund into which the ED Lit revenue will go, from which it will be appropriated annually through the budget process and also through our program budgets tracking through to each department and program. These proposals will result in a local lit rate of 2.2%, which will put us exactly in the middle of our immediate neighbor counties, with three higher and three lower. Statewide, it will put us in the second quartile of lit rates. And by the way, it is important to note that the state recently adopted a reduction in the state income tax, planning a 0.33 percentage point reduction over the coming years. That would bring the effective rate we are adding down nearly to 0.5% with that impact. And as to the bonds, our relative position of per capita debt will not budge. We will remain right in the middle of comparable cities. A 0.855 percentage point increase in the lit, as proposed here, is projected to generate approximately $18 million in new annual revenue for the City of Bloomington. Other governmental entities would also receive additional projected annual revenue. Specifically, the county would receive an estimated $11.4 million, Ellettsville $1.4 million, and the town of Steinsville about $44,000 annually. These new funds from the bonds and the lit will change our community's trajectory. They will allow us to address critical needs of and meet fundamental obligations to our residents, present and future. As Mayor Allison said 38 years ago, "We meet our first obligation of basic services," and we also will advance our community into a much brighter future, more sustainable, and more equitable. This proposal will soon be in your hands. I know very well that all nine of you, like me, love this city and work diligently to advance our future. I also know that the 10 of us may have different assessments of how best precisely to do that. I believe we share a great deal in values and in goals. Indeed, I think we share a great deal in approaches and in priorities, but we are not all of one mind. That's a democracy. I've done my best, I've done my best to provide a proposal that reflects the range of thinking on this council and in this community, on how best to move forward. It's up to us now to work together to find that common ground, reflecting the facts that none of us will find a final result matching exactly what we might want personally, but also the fact that we can be confident that the solution will be a great step forward for all of Bloomington. I thank you for your attention. I'm happy to respond to questions as I'm able. I also want to thank Controller Underwood and Corporate Counsel Beth Kate, who are here to step in as appropriate or needed. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to the democracy to come. And at this time, are there any questions at this point from council members for the mayor right now, after his preview of coming attractions? Councilmember Volin?
Yes, Mr. President, I had you for the presentation. It's very interesting, and I think well said. I would like to ask about the difference between this tax, which is permanent, and the proposed spending of it, which is something we only do one year at a time. So let's say, for example, that we find agreement with the priorities you've set, and we have these four different buckets into which we're channeling this money. How are we going to track this new source of revenue in the future? Is there going to be a, do you intend to create a separate fund so that we can follow those dollars more easily? Do you intend, what kind of accounting do you intend to do for us to? Because, I mean, if we're going to spend X dollars, I for one am very supportive of the 28% or so of this proposal that will be going to transit. And I've been very vocal about my belief that the more transit, the better, and that this is a good start. But I want to make sure that that money to transit is every year, and that the BT can rely on that money. How would you address that concern?
Well, thanks for the question. First, yes, we are creating a separate fund. We will create a separate fund in the, in the City of Bloomington's list of funds that will be, receive the Economic Development Local Income Tax revenue every year, and that fund will be appropriated every year through the budget process. And we're happy to, that will also like, it'll kind of look like the American Rescue Plan Act did, with itemized houses being spent. Each department will reflect it in their program budgets and such. I will say, for example, you mentioned transit. Bloomington Transit, its plans that are outlined here, which, which will be refined through a strategic planning process, if and how their revenue changes, they can't, they can't make major changes without some assurance that those commitments are going to continue through the year. the years, multi-years. That will be important for the administration and the council to assure Bloomington Transit, if they're going to start an express bus service, we can't cut their funds the next year without recognizing that would have dramatic impact. So it will require mutual commitment to certain longstanding obligations like that. That being said, of course, five years from now or 10 years from now, a council, an administration may decide on different priorities, and those... The democracy works that way. But we will have a different... A separate fund to account for all that transparency about where every dollar goes. And I do think some of these obligations in particular are going to require multi-year commitments to be sensible to pursue.
That's good news. I'm glad to hear that there will be a new fund created for these dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. I was curious to have your take on the following, and that is, as per the new contract that your administration negotiated with the police union, the police pay is part of this revenue that's produced from the tax. We agree that public safety is an essential city service, and the NOVAC report from, I think, 2019 described what we would require in terms of new officers. And we had that debate last year in terms of police pay and adding new officers. I'm curious as to why something so essential as city services as public safety wasn't anticipated earlier. In other words, it requires this tax to be implemented to fulfill the contract now. Why did we come up short in police pay, anticipating that that need was real, was coming? So... And will we have the funds to add police officers as we require as per the NOVAC report in the future?
Well, I thank you for the question. I'm not sure I agree that we didn't anticipate. I think we've been working very hard to anticipate improvements in public safety, investments in public safety. As you've seen, there's major investments in that through the PS Lit. Now, as you recall, when we passed the PS Lit in 2016, we collectively, and particularly those of you who passed it, indicated it should not be used for ongoing personnel costs. So that PS Lit was invested in equipment, in improving facilities, training, et cetera. We have consistently improved police numbers and training and such. And I think all I can tell you is, there has been severe pressure in the public safety world over the last two or three years that we've responded to. We responded to your direction and have simply said, in order to keep that going, we need additional general fund revenue to support that. And that's what we're asking you to adopt.
Does this tax anticipate further hires?
This tax will allow regular growth of the police department, yes.
And could you tell us projected...
We don't have numbers projected out in future years. This is not based on a particular profile of that. I know the NOVAC report indicated certain numbers. That was a particular report that we don't agree with all the assumptions of that report, but it was helpful to look at kind of trajectories going forward.
Okay. Well, that look ahead would be helpful as we move forward.
I guess I should note, too, it will, of course, be affected by whether annexation goes through in any areas which would be... require substantial new police positions with new revenue to pay for that from the annexation areas.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Mr. Mayor, for your presentation, I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Volin's question about multi-year commitments. What would be the legal mechanism for making such commitments?
I'm going to look to some lawyers. I don't know that... I mean, number one, if we finance bonds or any such acquisitions. For example, in the public safety section, we've articulated the need to purchase or rehab facilities. To the extent that that involves debt financing, then the legal mechanism is there to be able to dedicate that money through the budget. But that's not typically true for some of the other programs. And I don't... I think it's a public political commitment to do so that would be some of that. For example, with Bloomington Transit. Because, I mean, ultimately, one council cannot dictate that three years later, another council may not change its priorities, I suppose.
Yeah, I was thinking in particular in terms of Bloomington Transit, and, you know, it's not necessarily going to capital expenses. They can usually get grant funds for actual purchase of buses and such, but the operational expenses. So to your knowledge, there is no mechanism to say for the next five years...
I'll cast a question to my council or my controller, if they have ideas, but essentially, these are public commitments to priorities that we want to pursue, just the same as... I mean, there's no commitment that we will pay for every position in city government next year, whether it's a police department or Parks Department or any others. But we have a practice of supporting the programs that go through the budget cycle, and I would expect the same. Anybody else want to add to that? Jeff, is there? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I...
You will need to come to the mic, Ms. Kate.
Hi, Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel. So Councilmember Piedmont Smith, there is a capital improvement plan that is part of the required set of documents that goes along with lit that the administration will adopt. You have the guts of that actually already in the materials that you've been looking at in terms of the breakdown of the lit. And I believe, although I can confirm for you next week, but I believe that in the adoption of that plan, which is... Can be a multi-year plan, that there are some mechanisms for identifying things that have duration to them within the capital improvement plan. But I would agree with Mayor Hamilton. I think that as a general matter, lit is something that can be revisited by future councils, and the priorities in terms of the spending through the annual budget cycle will be revisited as well. So that helps.
Thank you very much.
I see.
Does Mr. Underwood wish to speak? You must be unmuted, sir.
I forget I have two buttons. Good evening. Jeff Underwood, City Controller, coming to you from the annex. I will say this, that our bonds are issued, and I believe the mayor said this, but I wanted to echo it again, that if bonds were issued to meet some of this plan, then that part of the revenue stream could not be revoked by future councils. They would have to continue to fund that through this tax. So any multi-year commitments, contract, legal contracts that the city would enter into, then future councils would be obligated to continue to fund those as they're approved by a sitting council as well. And then the rest of it is then the annual budget appropriation process, which, again, will have a separate fund, and you'll be able to match that up to the plan that was submitted and that you would ultimately hopefully adopt.
Thank you. Does that clarify for you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Scambolari.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hamilton. I appreciate the countless conversations that you referenced earlier, because I think they have been very helpful in sorting this out. I want to dig into one point a little deeper, though, because it's a question I get from constituents, and that's, what opportunities have we taken to look at cost cutting as a way to meet our obligations as a city? Could you comment on that, please?
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. We have worked very hard since I've been mayor, and I don't doubt mayors before me as well, to identify what we can do to reduce costs. That's included things like automating, of course, where, for example, we do thousands of housing inspections a year. We've automated that with technology that lets us be more efficient with that. We've replaced a four-person heavy fire engine crew with a two-person light SUV, if you will, crew to respond to medical emergencies. That has reduced both the cost of our facility and equipment, as well as personnel costs. As you know, we invested in sanitation improvements, which have reduced one position at sanitation to let us continue to be more efficient with that. Now, and we will continue to do that, and we can give you a longer list, but I will say this, one more thing. We tripled our employee training from 0.5 percent to 1.5 percent of our personnel costs, which I believe is an investment in efficiency and improvements in how our people can do their work. But ultimately, most of the city budget is in people. And we want to keep improving how our people work and improve the efficiency and the tools that they have. But major reductions, actual reductions in spending are very difficult without reducing headcounts. We believe we are very lean now. We will continue to look at that, but I can report to you, I believe we have a very skilled and hard-working staff in all of our departments, and we're going to continue to invest in their efficiencies that way. Happy to share a longer list with you, though, that we've got.
Great. Thank you. Perhaps in time, yes. Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you for the report, Mayor Hamilton. And also thanks for all the communication that we've had, going back and forth. I think it's very, very important. We talked about priorities. Speaking for myself, I think it's pretty clear that we're going to need a new revenue source. I think in our conversations, it's been clear on my part how much that we're actually going to need. We've also talked about the impact on, in particularly, those that are the least of us in our community from an income standpoint. Also, I am concerned... Well, not so much concerned, but I want to look at the impact. Not only we're talking lit, but every couple of years, we're looking at utility rates increase. We're looking at other things. So I'm sure that's part of your thinking as we move forward. But my questions are these. You said earlier that future councils may be able or will revisit this action, this potential action. Is one of those things that they might revisit is rescinding this tax or rescinding portions of it, something that could possibly be discussed moving into the future? That's one question. Secondly, since I won't ask anymore after this, we anticipate some recessionary pressures moving forward within the next one to three years. And I want to know what has been our financial experts' thinking with regard to absorbing those potential recessionary pressures?
Thanks. I'll try to get to all those if I can, Councilmember Sims. Appreciate it. Yes, absolutely. Future councils could adjust, rescind, reduce, change the lit level. That is in the prerogative of any council, so far as I know. Second, I do think it's relevant and appropriate, as we look at this, to benchmark ourselves to other cities, counties, looking at where we lie. That is one reason. I think it's important to recognize where do we fit on the state's lit list, if you will? Where do we fit in the debt per capita? I think those are important benchmarks, and I'm very comfortable that this city is continuing a very prudent fiscal approach while also investing in our future. In terms of recessionary threats or pressures, I think you'll all remember, we did invest some of our rainy day fund during the very rainy last two years. We're very glad to report that even with those investments, which I strongly believe helped us, through a counter-cyclical investment, recover well and not go through as difficult a pain as a community, we are now back up to the 33 percent balance in our funds. Now, that's kind of where we want to be in the face of potential recessions. One thing new revenue will do for us is to give us a little cushion to make sure we can build that up gradually over time, perhaps a little more, in case there is substantial downturn again. But we are positioned okay now, but without future revenue, that will be a very difficult position to hold. I don't know if that answered all of your questions, but thanks.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Smith.
And thank you for the presentation. I think where I would like to ask a question is about is, some people may feel a negative effect from paying a little bit more taxes, such as persons on fixed income, the elderly, persons with disability. How would you respond to comments about that? And what is your proposal and you thinking about that?
Sure. Thank you for that question. First, again, I would say it's important to kind of reality-check where we are compared to our neighbors in that kind of impact. It's important to note the state will be reducing as well state taxes. But absolutely, we are very focused on and sensitive to that sometimes this tax, which we are not allowed by state law, as you all know, to make progressive or adjust its application. It's under state law. It has to be a flat tax applied to all adjusted gross income, personal income. We are very sensitive to that, and that's why I'm very pleased and proud and hope you will support an Economic Equity Fund piece of this. A million dollars in the current proposal that would be targeted toward, are there members of our community for whom this tax bears a special and difficult burden, whether it's a low-income housing, a low-income working family that may be supported with childcare or through the Community Action Program or others, or a senior on a fixed income? So we have dedicated a substantial amount of money, I hope you will, to be available for that. Different kinds of programs could address that. We're open to thinking about those. There are some different ideas of individual development accounts or things like that. But I wish we could make it progressive lit, but this is one effort in the meantime to do what we can. And the last thing I'll say is, of course, we also believe a great deal of the investment in this lit is focused on helping advance the cause and the capacities and opportunities for particularly low and lower-middle income working families through the basic investments.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none, we thank you very much again for this preview report, and we will look forward to the coming weeks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Let democracy flourish.
Let it be so. Council committee reports, are there any this evening? On April the 19th, the Jack Hopkins Committee, of course, will convene to review applications and begin that process. So we are in the Jack Hopkins season here. But if there are no further committee reports, let us move now to the second opportunity for public comment. Let us ask, first of all, if there are anyone on the Zoom with hands up, or start to get your hands up, so we can get an idea how many people want to comment on matters not on the agenda this evening. And I see members of the chambers are lining up behind the podium. We wish for you to sign in, please, and state your name and line up, and we're happy to begin with our chamber public comment before we will then go to those who are joining us on Zoom. And so, given the number of people who are lining up, let's say three minutes for public comment this evening. Oh, this is the first period for public comment. If I misspoke, I am sorry. Welcome.
My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. And I just wanted to share here and share with members of the public that we had recently released a memo about where we see greatest needs for investments in the community to essentially be transformative for the future and move things forward. When we talk about economic development, that's defined as fostering conditions for prosperity in a community. And as our three local governments in Monroe County have been considering revenue for the future and other things like that, we went, we polled our members and other members of the public as well about what they see the highest priorities to be. Those essentially fall into eight key areas: housing, workforce development, infrastructure, employment, access to opportunity, quality of life, public safety, public health, and promoting our community inside and out. This is actually a memo that's available online on our website, bloomingtonedc.com, under the News section. I have copies as well. But especially relevant to, you know, recent conversations is what we heard from folks about what they would hope to see in a case for, you know, raising revenue in, you know, among the public, and specifically articulating the case for needed funds. What are the needs? What are the intended outcomes and how What are the intended outcomes and how they'll be measured over time? What are the funding streams that are there? Outlining why there's not currently enough existing funding and what that trajectory is. Outlining how raising taxes will impact residents, workforce, and employers. And also outlining what innovations have been applied to reduce waste and reallocate funding that was not used effectively. So this is something, you know, one might call it a business case, but really, it's a case for where are we headed? Why is this not working? And really, what is the central plan and vision for the community? We know that these are really heavy considerations that everybody is taking into account. And so, really appreciate learning more about it and the consideration you are giving it. If we can provide any additional information or anything, please let us know. And we're happy to share more information. Thank you.
And you will have three minutes.
Hi, sorry, my name is Greg Alexander. I'm here to talk about, I am later on your agenda, is the historic preservation implications of the Johnson Creamery smokestack. But I just wanted to talk about the transportation implications of it. We've got, I'm sure some of the members here are aware, there's a detour on the B-line. There's a part of the B-line that's closed. And I think that was a poor choice, and it was an optional choice. They could have issued an emergency order, like if it had been overshadowing, say, the courthouse or, say, Rogers Street. They would have issued an emergency order by now, and it would already be down. But it's, whether it's closed or not, it doesn't have to be closed poorly. If you approach it from the north, there were different signs up at different times, but it was never clear to me how we were supposed to go. And yet, that's pretty much the only key link to our bicycle and pedestrian network. We don't have a huge redundancy in that network. And so, what people have actually been doing is we go through the parking lot. And there's actually no clear way to go through the parking lot. You kind of, it depends on where cars are parked, where the, what do you call them? Like Uber Eats and stuff, they park at different places. They park exactly where you would naturally walk, actually, is one of their favorite places to park. And so, people are just kind of haphazardly walking through the parking lot. And they kind of congregate at the southwest corner. There's a tiny little path, it's windy, it's not, every single engineering detail is made to make it uncomfortable to carry that volume of traffic. And people wait there, they have conflicts, they have, you know, oh, you go, no, I'll go, you know, kind of confusion. And it's unforced. And in fact, three weeks ago, I was reading new reports, and somebody said that a county commissioner broke their finger tripping on that part of sidewalk that ordinarily wouldn't normally see all this traffic. So it is having a negative public health consequence. And to me, I just look at, how did that happen? And as near as I can tell, from talking to people in public works and parks and engineering, and I called a bunch of people, it was just some people, some staff members in parks with no engineering experience, no transportation certification, nothing. They just decided off the top of their heads, ah, I know, we're going to tell people to take a hike through the parking lot. I think that's crappy, that's garbage, that's not quality, it's not priority. It's not an engineer approving a design and then bringing it before the Board of Public Works. It's just, we have, even the process that I have continually criticized is better than this process. And yet, we're just letting parks make transportation decisions. That's wrong, we don't have to do that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. And next to the podium, state your name, sign in. And a reminder, these are for matters not on this evening's agenda. We will have other opportunities for public comment.
Okay, before I introduce myself, can I ask, am I allowed to comment on the mayor's presentation, which is on the agenda?
I will allow that, since that was a report.
I'm sorry?
I will allow that.
Okay, yeah, Peter Dorfman. I want to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Smith made. When I saw earlier today the number, the gross figure that the mayor was asking for in the increase, I didn't choke at it. I, you know, I didn't find it a nightmarish number. But I can say with, I think, complete confidence that I don't speak for many of my neighbors in the near west side, which, contrary to opinions that are held in some quarters, is not one of the more prosperous neighborhoods in the city. I think you have your constituent meetings coming up. I hope you will go out of your way to get impressions from a wide variety of your constituents about how they feel about the overall number. I also am hoping that we'll see a robust debate on the specific uses of funds that the mayor is proposing. In Appendix B of the proposal that the mayor produced recently about how he would spend this money, under the innocent sounding heading Equality and Quality of Life for All, I find a vague reference to something that is called, quote, "supporting missing housing types." I would like to know precisely what use of funds that phrase represents and have that discussed publicly before the council moves forward with this. Thank you very much.
Sign in and state your name.
Hi, my name is William Colter. I have two transparency-related items that I want to bring to your attention. First is the Novak Report, which we thought came out in February. But Dave Askins over at the B-Square Bulletin had to do an open records request to get another part of it. He had an article in the March 25th edition. Consultant Bloomington Mayor's Office Should Add Top-Level Position, Give Better Briefings to City Council. It's really confounding to me why he would need to do an open records request to get a taxpayer-funded consultant's report. And it's especially confounding when the topic was something as innocuous as improved communication between the mayor and the city council. I know this is not a question and answer, period, but perhaps at constituent meetings we could discuss this, and maybe I could understand this better. The second item is a guest column in the HT. I read it online. In it, a former Bloomington controller and a current professor of public finance at the university were looking for fiscal information about the city of Bloomington's current status. And they said there was an inadequate level of transparency for them to make a determination. And the topic that they were specifically investigating was the LIT. So this is kind of puzzling for me, too. And again, I'm hoping at the constituent meetings that, you know, council members could explain to me how they'll be able to make an informed decision about the LIT and the GO bonds when, you know, professors of finance and former city controllers say that the information isn't there. Thank you.
And next, we have?
I'm not super clear. Can I speak to something that's relevant around the LIT or not?
Certainly, I've allowed other comments. Again, we will have ample opportunity for all of us in the coming weeks to have, you know, very robust discussion and public comment about the LIT.
Thanks. My name's, I'm going to, my name is Jeff Meese. My partner and I operate some businesses in town, 10 businesses. And we employ about 250 people and have a payroll of about $3 million annually. And I just wanted to share something about the way we run our company that I think might be relevant with, around the LIT. Lenny and I, back when Tommy Allison was mayor, we got started. And in about 1990, we had several businesses, and we were trying to figure out, how would we, how should we account for these shared expenses? Like my salary and Lenny's salary and these administrative costs of the business. And we went and talked to Steve Hughes, who was the prominent restaurateur in town at the moment. And he said, oh, you should just set up a management fee and then collect a certain percentage of each of your units, and that goes in, and that can cover your overhead. Great idea, we should have thought of that. And I just wanted to share that we set that management fee based on what Steve had suggested at 6.34% back in the late 80s. Our managers in our company, we treat all as partners. And each of them get a percentage, a flat percentage, of the monthly bottom line of the business. So they're essentially owners. The 75% comes in and handles the things that profits pay, like loans mostly. And people keep 25%. We recognize that if, when, if we are to raise that 6.75% management fee that we take from them, it's like a tax, that their income goes down. And so, today, 30-some years later, our management fee is still 6.34%. Now, our sales have grown dramatically, just like the payrolls in Bloomington. And so, to say Bloomington needs more revenue, well, it's got more revenue. But when we raise that rate, that's a bigger slice of the pie. And what I want to know from the council and from the mayor is, why does the city need a bigger slice of the pie? Because there's only 100%, there's only one pie. And when we take more pie, somebody doesn't get their pie. So, just that. Thank you. Appreciate, I appreciate your work. It's great to see everybody's faces.
I agree. But now we move on to our Zoom residents who are here to speak. Do we have hands up? How many do we have?
Our president, two hands raised.
Okay.
First is the person with a screen named Alex Goodland, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Okay, yeah. So, hi, it's a long time no chat. Hope you missed me, I miss you guys. So I want to kind of talk about, I guess, bringing democracy. And another kind of democracy is workplace democracy. So I don't know who's been following the Indiana Graduate Coalition, I guess, dispute with IU and the Provost going on. But it's happening, and it looks like there may be a strike going on in the next week or so. And I want to mention real quick, the Provost's letter, which nobody should really like. They claim that they're, you know, making some concessions for some students, and they are, but not really enough. The main thing we need is for them to recognize our union. And I would very much ask Provost Eliza K. Havalko, who sent a rather threatening email, you know, essentially threatening graduate students like myself suspension from work and, you know, taking away my health care and whatnot to, you know, not threaten me. And I know that the city council doesn't like incivility very much. So I would hope that the city council issue some kind of statement, and also the mayor, if the mayor's around, issue some kind of statement, maybe in support of, you know, the Graduate Coalition's request for, to recognize their union and not to issue these kinds of threats that are clearly trying to suppress labor. And thanks for listening, I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Goodland. And who do we have next on Zoom?
Next we have a person this week named Jim Shelton, who should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Castle. Jim Shelton, I am with the chamber, but right now, I'm speaking on behalf of CASAs, a court-appointed special advocates. Want to bring to your and the public's attention that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Everybody in the community needs to help deal with this. One of the ways they can learn how they can do that, there is, was an article in the HT, or you can go on Facebook to the Monroe County CASA webpage. And it lists some of the indicators that you might see that indicate the child is in need of help. A few examples are recurring or unexplained bruises or injuries, poor hygiene, acting out sexually at an inappropriate age, difficulty staying awake or concentrating, and there are several others. But most of you will never encounter this. But a way you can help deal with this problem, which is very prevalent in our community, is to volunteer to be a CASA. CASAs are court-appointed special advocates. There are volunteers who work with the children who are in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. There's no real backgrounds required to do that. Objectivity, tenacity, and good communication skills are some of the characteristics of great CASA volunteers. And the CASA program will teach you the rest. Our next training session will start June 6th and run through the 29th. It'll be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. And you'll learn the roles and responsibilities of the CASA, family dynamics of abuse and neglect, Indiana's child protection law provisions, interacting with children and families, case managers, and other professionals involved in the case, and report writing. So I invite people to think about this, look into it. We need more volunteers to help deal with the problems that we're having with children. So thank you for the opportunity to spread the word.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Is there anyone else from Zoom? Before we conclude our public comment? Okay, very good. Let us now move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any this evening? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I move that we appoint, and I have to get the list in front of me, sorry, the following individuals to the Commission for the Status of Children and Youth. We would like, on behalf of Team C, I move to reappoint Katie Rodriguez to seat C2, appoint Tatiana Peters to seat C4, and appoint Emily Alford to seat C1.
All right, those appointments have been moved. And seconded, will all say aye, if you are in favor.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Those are approved, and do you have more?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we approve the appointment of Sean Maya to seat C4 of the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability upon the resignation of current Commissioner Colin Murphy later this month.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, and that appointment has been approved. Thank you very much. On behalf of Team C, we now move to legislation for second readings and resolution.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2205 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2205 to vacate public parcels regarding two 16.5-foot-wide alley segments located between West First Street, West Second Street, South Rogers Street, and South Morton Street, City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. The petitioner, City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission, requests vacation of two segments of alley right-of-way, the first between West First Street and West Second Street, and the second, an alley that runs east and west between South Morton and a 16-and-a-half-foot platted alley to the west in order to facilitate Phase 1 East of the Hopewell Development. The right-of-way will be replaced with new sections of South Madison Street and West University Street. Your committee due pass recommendation was 501.
Thank you.
I move that Ordinance 2205 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and who is with us to present this evening? I see Mr. Scott Robinson approaching the podium.
Good evening. My name is Scott Robinson. I'm the Director of Planning and Transportation. I want to provide a quick overview of the Committee of Hope meeting that happened last week. And I do have a few slides to follow up on that discussion. First of all, in your packet, if you recall, we had, I included three slides to give an overview of the Hopewell neighborhood. To refresh everybody's memory, the Bloomington Hospital site redevelopment master plan was completed in January of 2000, last year, 2021. Since then, staff has worked on reimagining that neighborhood as we rebranded as Hopewell Neighborhood. A primary plat was approved by the Plan Commission in February of 2022. That plat was based on the guidance in the master plan, as well as the zoning district mixed-use medium. mixed-use medium, which was rezoned in May of 2021. Those lot sizes and configurations are based on the zoning district standards. And again, with the reconfiguration of these lots, and the master plan is envisioned to have a total residential unit in this neighborhood block of approximately 210 to 330 residential units. Slide 2 in the packet provided an overlay of the alleys being requested to be vacated that's highlighted in red. I will note that if you look at those alley configurations with the lot configurations, you can see it creates quite a number of conflicts with that lot arrangement, and that's why we are asking the vacation of those right-of-way before you. The last slide kind of overlays the primary plat with the vacated lot and kind of the renderings that was included in the master plan to give you an idea of the vision that was proposed for this neighborhood block. And again, I think you can clearly see the challenges that the existing right-of-ways pose for the future redevelopment of this area. The blue areas that were shown on that slide, more importantly, shows the re-establishment of the existing traditional grid, the extension of Madison Street and University Street. So with that, I'm going to attempt my technology, which I haven't done a very good job of sharing the screens, because based on our conversation, there was some follow-up about renderings of street views of the neighborhood, and I want to be able to share, and a question about sidewalks and other access. So please bear with me for a moment. So this first slide, you can see is a rendering, kind of a bird's-eye view of the Hopewell block, again bounded by Rogers Street, Second Street, First Street, and Morton Street. The dash lines you can see there is the rough approximation of where the new right-of-way will be of the new streets, and as you can see, the existing structures that are currently there as we, as today shows. The next slide, again, provides a color rendering of these new right-of-ways that will be developed as part of this neighborhood development. Again, north-south, the extension of Madison Street, the Greenway Street is actually an extension of University Street east-west, and just to the north of that, it's showing a linear park as part of the neighborhood Greenway extension into the Hopewell neighborhood and the overall site moving west. The next rendering, if you can imagine yourself on the site looking east, this is from Rogers Street looking east, so again, this is looking down the future University Street, and then on the left, you can see the linear kind of neighborhood Greenway park that's being proposed as part of this. As you head east, again, moving down the block, this is where Madison and University would intersect, and again, you're heading east towards the Beeline Trail and Morton Street. This is a bird's-eye view that was created as part of this area to show conceptual drawings of buildings being placed in there, but more importantly, showing the street, the public improvements being made with this neighborhood. Lots of trees, narrow streets, there's some on-street parking. You can see that University Street is narrow, and again, supposed to be a slow neighborhood street as we access this new neighborhood block. Just another rendering of that concept that's being, currently in the works to being developed. Another concept, again, I believe this is looking north-south on Madison, and again, the intersection of University. And this is the view looking from the Beeline looking west, so you can see the interaction of the Beeline Trail, transacting the site, and then you can see Morton Street, and then as you look west through the site. This next slide, I can try to, can everybody see that okay? This is the size of the block. It's a pretty large super block. What the new street grid would establish is a more traditional block, something that's in the neighborhood of about 300 feet per block. The blue highlights are showing the new pedestrian connections that would be created as part of this, as well as the street widths, or I'm sorry, the sidewalk widths of anywhere from 10 feet to 15 feet wide. So again, pretty wide sidewalks than many of our neighborhood streets have currently. And I think that's the last slide that I have to share based on our conversation. This is just a reference for those that are in attendance of the slides that were included in the packet. This is Slide 1 that shows the preliminary plat. This is Slide 2 with the red alleys being considered for vacation overlaid with the renderings of that. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions on the Ordinance 22-05.
Open it up to council questions. Councilmember Volan.
Madam Chair, Mr. Robinson, thanks for the presentation. One question I have is, how much involvement did planning staff have with the design of the renderings? I mean, I know the renderings might have been done by a consultant, but to what extent did city staff influence the design of this new neighborhood?
Well, the neighborhood design, again, going back to the beginning, is really formed by the master plan for the hospital site. That was used as a baseline, as well as the base zoning. We hired a consultant to work with staff to work on the plating, and there was frequent and regular collaboration with planning staff, engineering staff, public work staff, park staff, the controller's office, everything in trying to figure out what's appropriate for this. But again, it really kind of goes back to that foundation from the master plan.
So where did the idea? For sort of the, I don't know what to call the university street, it's kind of park-like, I guess, like the park-like amenity. Is that a parks-initiated thing? Was that a planning staff? Like, where did that idea come from?
It was born out of the master planning process originally with that. And again, it was a recommendation to provide a connection through the whole hospital site, a kind of a slow neighborhood street. There was an extension of trying to create a Beeline Trail experience as you head west through the site to connect with that. Using the guidance of the transportation plan on street widths, parking configuration, and those things are things that we used, again, to influence the street design on that.
Is there any, I've got more questions, but I don't want to step on other members' toes if they have questions. I'd like to keep going. Thank you. To what extent did outdoor dining play a role in the thinking of the design of this area? Because there's a lot of public right-of-ways devoted to what I think is greenery and trail transportation. Is there any, like, are the sidewalks extra wide for?
Well, the sidewalk, thanks for the question, Councilmember Volan, I should have said that in the beginning.
It's okay, it's okay. Thank you.
The sidewalks, as I noted, are fairly wide, which would allow for outdoor seating. The zoning district is mixed-use medium scale, which again, does allow for mixed uses. I don't recall the specific number in the master plan, but there is an anticipated kind of non-residential, commercial use in the whole site. I did mention the number of residential units on this block, but that does not include, I did not include the kind of commercial, non-residential footprint in there. With that said, I don't see any reason why those sidewalks could be, could not be used for outdoor seating. I do know then the renderings of the kind of Greenway park-like area, there are some outdoor seating locations, and it's not all trees, there are some hardscaping. I don't think that's been decided if those areas would be available for outdoor seating, but certainly something that could be looked at.
Well, you just led to my final question, which is, you talk about things that have not been decided yet. Why is it that, I mean, I think of this as resembling very much a sub-plan. I don't know if it's actually a sub-plan that we would consider to be part of the comprehensive plan, but it looks just like one, and I wonder why it didn't require council approval?
The hospital master plan?
Yes.
It's a report that had a lot of community engagement. It certainly could have gone through a comprehensive plan amendment, but given the timeline of the hospitals leaving the site and possibly, you know, the negotiation with turning over to the city, I think it was in the best interest, and again, I'm just speculating my personal opinion, that that effort to engage the community and to re-envision the master plan is something that we use to build upon along with the zoning. It certainly could be implemented as part of that, but I would note that even if it was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, those are largely guiding documents. They are not specific in the lot widths, the densities, and those sorts of things. So again, you know, I think with the work that we have done with the other departments, it's very consistent with planning documents, transportation plan, comprehensive plan, hospital master plan, or the Bloomington Hospital Site Redevelopment Master Plan.
I'm sure it is. Maybe I would ask a follow-up to that, which is, were there any other design scenarios considered, like perhaps a rounder intersection that's larger in the middle, or, you know, different configurations? Were they internally debated, or was it simply someone said, let's go this way, and everybody sort of said, okay?
Well, you know, I think the...
Multiple choices.
Yeah. The things that we discussed internally, obviously, are looking at the transportation plan and the street designations on street widths and on street parking. The city and IU Health currently do not own all the properties within this block, so that creates some limitations on how much liberty we have to redesign a lot of the lots and/or configuration of the streets. So the things that were debated and discussed were number of lots, lot sizes, how do we get public utilities to those, the types of infrastructure that's being provided. The linear park originally was envisioned to be included as part of private development in the master plan, and again, the decision was to make this a public amenity. And so that's kind of the things, the evolutions that have gone through to the point where we are on the decisions on that. Really, what I think, you know, based on the council's criteria for vacations of right-of-way, I believe that the criteria have been met for the vacation. Now, while I do think it's important to think about what's going there, I do want to respectfully remind the criteria that council established to vacate the right-of-way on that. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Is there a particular rush to this decision?
I believe so there is, to be honest. Currently, the purchase agreement with IU Health is coming to a point where, as you know, the core properties is currently under demolition, and that's, you know, a larger process that takes time as part of the agreement. There was a phased release as part of the other associated properties to turn over to the city. The time and money that it takes to go through the process, the plating process, hiring the consultants to do the designs, and then do the bid documents for construction are all costs that have been invested to move forward, to delay that, to redraw them, or think there are costs that would, could possibly increase if these were delayed. You know, the current bidding environment right now, as we know, inflation and other things are driving things pretty high. I don't know if that's a cost I would recommend we take that risk. Time is of essence, mostly because the current status of the site, if it sat vacant for an unknown time, might create a dampening effect on the interest from the development community as we try to negotiate purchase agreements for those properties. So I do think it's pretty urgent that we move forward with this to begin activating this pretty exciting project within the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson.
I think my first question concerns, topic that was brought up by architect, local architect, Mark Renat last week, and that was the importance of maintaining not only the grid pattern of the urbanized area, but alleyways as well. And I think you're making a case that these are, there's a conflict because of the scale of the buildings. Scale of the buildings, I interpret as multifamily, and they're larger, they're larger than a different housing form, for instance. And apart from the east-west corridor, which I recognize isn't going to be an important bike and ped amenity, I think what I'm curious about is that, I wonder if your department, is it important for you to preserve that grid pattern, including the alleyways? Alleyways serve as an important, I think, linkage for bike and ped. They formerly also served utility in terms of services that no longer is important, as important. So in that sense, they're kind of anachronistic. How does your department, when you look at maintaining the grid pattern, that's been very successful for Bloomington downtown, how important are this grid pattern and the alleyways included?
Thanks, Mr. Vallow, for that question and follow-up. You know, broadly speaking, yeah, alleys are an important thing, especially when you're looking at downtown. There are many unimproved alleys across the community. There are encroachments, trees, utility lines, and other things, so when you start talking about alleys and the potential for those neighborhood connections and other connections, we as a city generally like to preserve the right-of-way. The public right-of-way is something we value, and we don't like to give up very easily. So I appreciate the question of, why would we do it in this instance to give up, you know, connectivity? I would, I'd like to share a screen just to show the connectivity of the existing alleys and in the context that they don't really connect to anything today, at least in this neighborhood context where it is. So I do believe that they don't really serve a purpose for connectivity in a greater sense. I also like to raise, you know, kind of an interesting challenge that we think about alleys, as we all know that at least many are improved to kind of non-accessible standards because they don't, they're not required to do that. This is a community that we pride ourselves in trying to increase accessibility for people with all mode choices and options. Alleys do raise some interesting challenges to mobility. They raise challenges to vision and sight distances for safety. I think we've all, all of us that have used alleys for kind of a cut-through sometimes pop out of behind a building and might accidentally run into somebody very closely. So these are things that I think we have to be careful that we think about. But let me share the screen real quickly with the existing right-of-ways. On this image, it's a larger area, you can see the red alleys that are highlighted on there. Those are the existing alleys being considered for vacation with this request. The alleys, the other locations are highlighted in a light blue, I guess, is what I see. Apologize for those that have colorblindness or can't interpret the colors, but again, I think if you kind of can see where this, my cursor is circling, these are the alleys in question. This is the larger block being considered, and then around that block, you can see the existing current alleys as they stand. I do think it's pretty hard to imagine that this provides any reasonable connectivity within the greater area. There's a little bit to the south, very little bit to the east and west. That's, again, I think, just a point of reference, if that helps.
Is this, does this map show, in other words, those are existing alleys in the blue?
These are existing, these are existing alleys that are platted. It doesn't necessarily give the status if they are improved or unimproved.
Okay. Are we to assume then that if, say, the alley that runs east and west, the red one, that doesn't have an extension of the right-of-way to the east through that parking lot? Has that been surrendered? That would be...
That's correct.
That's my, would be my assumption. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Councilmember Laertie.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for the presentation. Is...
Is the hope or the goal in working with developers to build out something similar to what we see represented in the plan in terms of the building orientation, parking, drive-cuts, that sort of thing?
Those are purely, thanks for the question, Councilmember Flaherty, those are purely there for context. That's not the expectation of the designs. I mean, you could see that they were fairly white, blocked-faced, don't have a lot of detail. The point of the renderings was really to show the public improvements on there. So that's not the expectation of what those buildings could be in the future. You know, it doesn't mean a developer could not come in and purchase a couple of the lots. You know, the lots that are being platted are not very large, half acre or less. You know, that's a pretty standard lot size for many single-family homes. It's the zoning, the mixed-use medium scale that allows for the multi-story and mixed uses that are on those lots.
Thank you. Maybe some related follow-up. And I have some similar concerns about the lack of platted alleys in not just this four-block stretch, though I do praise the reconnected street grid, but what appears to be a lack of platted alleys in the entire hospital footprint, even though there would be some opportunities for connectivity, but connectivity aside, I think part of the other purpose is that we reduce things like drive-cuts, which can reduce pedestrian safety, and also have buildings front on the street and, you know, the backs of the buildings where cars park or that sort of thing behind, to create engaging, human-scaled urban forum. And in the images, you know, with the aerial renderings, I'm seeing a lot of surface parking lots fronting on the street, and that's where, like, would that even be permitted, you know, in mixed-use medium scale? Like, is, what if someone combined lots? Could they do that? Can you have a, if you have a whole block-sized building, I'm thinking of the southwest quadrant lot, I see Lot 3 is a very large lot, if somebody combined all those lots for an entire block and fronted on, say, Rogers, then inevitably the other street is actually their back, and they could put, you know, surface parking and sorts of other things that actually create a really, you know, unengaging and sort of hostile pedestrian environment right next to this greenway and the B-line that we're trying to enhance that feeling. So that's kind of where my concern is, and I guess I'm curious for your perspective on these renderings showing a lot of surface parking lots that are fronting on streets and the potential for that to be our actual outcome, since we're not including platted alleys.
Councilmember Flaherty just pointed clarification. I didn't see rendering showing parking. Are you referencing the master plan or the renderings on the street views?
Not the street views, the aerial that you ended with, that shows the crossed blue line as well as the red right-of-way to be vacated? If you pulled it up, I could show you.
Yeah. So those are taken from the master plan? They're not reflective of what our zoning ordinance necessarily allows. They were merely trying to demonstrate some density and scale with those buildings. There were some internal discussions about the level of detail, and is it reflective of what the zoning standards allows? To answer your question, no, parking lots would not be allowed in front of the buildings with the standards. There are setbacks with that that we'd have to look at. Obviously, you know, our parking standards are very progressive, where we don't have very high parking requirements. I would say that, you know, there is a parking structure that we are retaining on the main hospital site, that it certainly could be used to help augment parking needs for the neighborhood, so that's something that, again, we can kind of consider as we move forward. So the larger idea of, oh, should we, you know, should we have thought about alleys? We did discuss it. The guidance wasn't there in the master plan, but I would like to point out that the public improvements with the existing streets, not including the parks, is about four acres of the site. You start using alleys and you start cutting up this block. Furthermore, you know, might increase, you know, maybe some of the ideals that you talked about, but there are ideals about increased options for housing choices here, with the city is in control of negotiating and required affordable housing, and so we would want, we would prefer to have as much flexibility and options available with the amount of land. Now, with that said, there are other locations around the hospital site, particularly to the south, that have existing connections to those neighborhoods, and I think those are important connections to look at. Historically, I looked at the 18, actually, a staff member let me look at the original plat of this area, and there were no alleys platted in this area. It's actually quite striking how large of the seminary plots were for this neighborhood. So, anyway.
Have some more? Has the rest of the hospital, former hospital site been platted like this yet with those? And do you know at this point if there's any intent to include alleys on any of the rest of the site? It didn't appear like they were in the master plan.
Rest of the site, no, there's no, been no level of detail on this. Currently, the costs associated with redeveloping this site, with the site planning, this construction, those are things that are currently funded and we're moving forward with. As far as the rest of the site, there has been no identified funding to move forward with that. There's transportation or roadway improvement for First Street through federal dollars, but you're correct, the alleys haven't been fleshed out in the master plan. And again, I think as you look at some of the neighborhoods to the south, there's some alley-loaded sites, South and McDole, that are included in the master plan. So I wouldn't say they're not excluded from the plan, they're just not included in this block or the core block. That kind of balances this linear connection through the whole site.
Final question, if that's okay, or we can wait?
Shall we go to Councilmember Piedmont Smith first, and we'll come back to a second round?
Yes. And I actually think what I'm going to say could elucidate Councilmember Flaherty's question, and that is, Mr. Robinson, in this, what is now a very large block, in the southwest quadrant, is not going to be the city's property, right? That's Centerstone that the city doesn't own. And also, the very southwest, where there's that brick building, what's it called, St. John Associates, that's also not going to be city property, right?
That's correct, Councilmember Piedmont Smith and the north.
Those have parking lots that we cannot change.
The, also, the parcel in the northwest is not currently in the possession. City is negotiating with Centerstone on the portion of the right-of-way on the current parking lot to reconfigure that, but yeah, those, we don't own those properties.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, now for the second round. Councilmember Flaherty, you want to continue?
Sure. Just a last, thank you. Just a last question related to an earlier appointment by Councilmember Volin about the council's role or not in some of these decisions. So as, you know, right-of-way acquisition potentially moves forward with the rest of the site, is there any process at all by which the council would be involved in that? Or would this council have options to help dictate that direction if it was the will of the council to include, for instance, platted alleys in some of the site as it gets developed?
Well, you know, participation or by council, I think, comes in a wide range of ways on, you know, future funding. So this project has been funded by multiple sources through annual budgets. There is a representative that sits on the plan commission from city council. This plat was proposed, primary plat at that opportunity. You know, engagement moving forward, there's certainly opportunity to discuss those and what makes sense. You know, one of the things that we're cognizant of as a city is the operation and maintenance cost of our right-of-way. And so one of the things, I think, to be mindful of that, kind of circling back to when we were discussing the lot configurations, and, you know, are the lots too big? Should we make smaller lots? There are costs associated with providing that infrastructure to those sites for development, and I think those are things that we have to evaluate moving forward for the other sites to be considered for redevelopment.
Thank you.
All right, additional questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, following up on Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Volin's question regarding council's role, I think perhaps, I'm not alone in expressing that my concern about surrendering alleyways is accessibility and the potential for a monolithic facade that extends for an entire block that is impenetrable for pedestrians or for bikers and so forth. So that concerns me, but my question is regarding the timing of this. So you described one motivation for this, for surrendering these alleys, is that there's a sunk cost that this is far along in the process. So I kind of bristle at that, because I'd rather consider the merits of the alley vacation on its own without having to consider the sunk costs that are motivating me to approve it. In this case, it doesn't seem to be that dramatic. I mean, I understand that these alleys don't link. I understand that there is pedestrian and biking infrastructure included in this, but could this have been brought to council earlier?
The alley vacation request? You know, it's funny, we typically don't do alley vacation or, you know, right-of-way requests very often. When this was first being discussed, we had to do some research last time there was a request brought forward, and it's a little bit unique, the city staff, the administration coming forward in this instance, usually it's a developer or a resident requesting for that, where it's facilitated through planning and transportation. Now, circling back, yeah, the timing of this, I honestly don't know, Councilmember Rallo. You know, I have phoned a friend down here, reached out to Andrew Seabor, if he wants to jump in on the timing of that. I know he's been involved very deeply in this project and his team, but my understanding is, as we've done the due diligence of the property, looking at the configurations, this is the time. I don't know if it could have been brought forward before or after. Andrew, do you mind helping me out? Thank you, Andrew.
Sure. Hello, councilmembers Andrew Seabor, city engineer. Just on the timing of the specific alley vacation, right-of-way vacation request, it honestly could not have happened much sooner because the city did not own all of the properties that fronted this alley, and there was a specific property that relied on one of these alleys for access. So it wasn't until recently that the city acquired it, and soon after we started the plating process, and so maybe it could have happened a couple of weeks later, but really, this formal process couldn't start much earlier.
Okay, good to know. Did I communicate my concern, though? That I regard vacating alleys as non-trivial, it's important.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and so I'd rather consider it, I'd rather consider it with, you know, without surrendering all the sunk costs that have already been placed on this. It seems to me, I've seen this design for over a year, I mean, this rendering, but in any case, I think I made a point. It was sort of rhetorical in that sense, that I prefer to see it earlier, just anticipating that I need to make an objective decision as opposed to something where I feel some level of coercion. Thanks. Yeah, that's a comment.
Comment. Any other questions from council before we move to public comment? Councilmember Volin?
Here we are, I mean, you're essentially, the administration is essentially proposing an entirely new neighborhood. Why would there be any parking requirements in this neighborhood? Why would we need that? This is a city-controlled neighborhood. We already have it, we've had in the UDO for quite a while, for a number of years, that there's no obligation to build parking, there's no parking minimum south of Fourth Street. This is a new neighborhood, south of Fourth Street, controlled by the city. Why are we worried about businesses providing parking at all?
For this particular block, Councilmember Volin. Again, you know, this is based on the zoning district. You know, once the city's transferred, once the property is transferred over to the city, and as the site begins to build out with the public improvements and infrastructure, there's certainly things the city can negotiate with the development community. I did mention, you know, one of the priorities is affordable housing, sustainability is another one that we're looking at for Hopewell.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm going to get, stick to this point here. It's not stopping a developer from adding parking, it's simply not requiring it. Why would we require it?
Again, looking at the, you have to reference the standards within UDO. We can't speculate what kind of project will be coming forward, and so that's speculating on that. If we want to discuss the standards in the UDO, I'm happy to have that at another time. I don't think that's appropriate, considering the alley vacation request. Now, with that said, I did mention that the city did retain the existing parking structure on-site. There's certainly opportunities to look at that structure. You know, in my opinion, I think our standards are low. We certainly don't require more, and we can certainly encourage less. And again, I'd be happy to talk about the parking requirements at another time.
Okay, I appreciate that. But with respect to the alley vacations in particular, does the UDO really call for, does the UDO allow no alleys in a new neighborhood being replatted like this, in this area?
The UDO for the subdivision type doesn't require alleys, requires street connections. Now, that doesn't prohibit them, you certainly could do that. There are standards that talk about alleys and how to deal with parking and access in that regard. Again, we, there was debates about how do the sites gain access and minimizing curb cuts and all the things that we are having this discussion tonight on the plat, and the decision to base the zoning in the plat, in the master plan, is kind of where we ended up. So I hope that answers your question.
For now, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, let us go to the public. If there's anyone here who would like to make comment on ordinance 22-05, please line up for the podium, and anyone tuning in from home on the Zoom connection, start to raise your hands now. I'm not seeing anybody show up to the podium in chambers. Do we have any hands?
There are messages.
All right. Doesn't look like there's going to be much public comment on this, so with that, let us go back to council for any final comments or additional questions, if you have them. Councilmember Volin?
I'm going to move that this be sent to a third reading. I don't expect it to, but I feel like there are some open questions here about, you know, who has authority, who should have authority over an area like this, a unique moment in the history of the city? You know, I have heard, for as long as I have been thinking about city council, I've heard developers and the administration, in the Hamilton administration, the Cruzan administration, even heard in the Fernandez administration, why are you asking questions? Now, we've been designing this for, you know, ever, and we, all these things are going to be held up if you held this up, and, you know, it's almost like the administration simply puts it to us to, well, okay, if you want to hold up all of our plans, you'll vote against this alley vacation. You won't vote for the funding. It's not the way it should work, but the council did not actually get to vote on this plan, and this plan is no smaller than any other sub-area in the comprehensive plan or in the UDO. I think the urgency to pass this is created by the, entirely by the administration's decisions and their ambition, and I don't blame them for being ambitious, and I appreciate their ambition when it comes to some of the initiatives they've made, but I would argue that the option, the potential to have alley- But I would argue that the option, the potential to have alleyways here in a more traditional form like we're used to on the Courthouse Square, for example, was sacrificed here to make this linear parkway north of the would-be-new University Street. I do support the idea of restoring Madison and University, but this park in the middle, I'm increasingly questioning. The idea that the primary motive of this area should be, like, half-block-long slabs of multifamily housing, I'm not so sure about that. I mean, I think there should be multifamily housing here, no question, but why can't there be alleys here? I think that the Greenway north of University is an example of Mr. Alexander's suggesting that parks is designed in transportation, and we should be, you know, aesthetics shouldn't be the first thing we're considering when it comes to transportation, even though aesthetics are an important asset to this project. But, like, I just, I, just because of the way in which this plan has been brought to us, I cannot support vacating the alley. This is the only mechanism that's been given to us to say, wait a minute, you should have come to the council sooner, and involved us more in it. So, I mean, I, if I, if we vote on it tonight, I'll vote no. If we can get some kind of agreement to involve the council more heavily in the decisions in this new area, then I'd be inclined to postpone it for two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council? Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, I, there are some very good aspects about this plan, but I think that it's not a bad idea to provide further details. I really do appreciate Mr. Robinson giving us additional materials. I think my greatest apprehension is the, what Councilmember Volan just described, which is this, a large linear obstruction for people to walk around, and that might be, maybe there are, could be accommodations for additional pedestrian access by way of alleys. I don't know. I don't know enough about this plan as it exists right now. I've seen renderings of it, but maybe further questions might be helpful. So, I would be supportive of another hearing. That's my comment.
Additional council comments? Councilmember Flaherty.
I'm not sure if another hearing is needed for my case, but I intend to vote no all the same, not because I think that these existing rights-of-way are in the right place for alleys, they're obviously not, but like Councilmember Volan referenced, this is actually the only opportunity for us to weigh in on this subject essentially, of where should rights-of-way be in the new hospital site. If there are other mechanisms, I'd like to explore those and, with our council attorney and staff, but there's really no way for us to weigh in on this. So, this is my weighing in on it and expressing my displeasure with the idea that the whole site could be developed without any platted alleys. I think that's the wrong decision from an urban form perspective. I think it's counter to a lot of our comprehensive plan goals. Looking at, you know, the southeast quadrant that we were looking at, there's, you know, reasonable-sized lots there, 7,500 square feet, they could be smaller in mixed-use, medium-scale, but somebody, as Mr. Robinson noted last week, could buy all those, combine them, and build a building, quite literally, I mean, the size of the former Smallwood, now Avenue on College, that's the size of the quadrant we're talking about, and without an alley, there's the potential for these large monolithic multifamily buildings. It's not that I have a problem with multifamily here, I think it should be multifamily here, but I think the form should not be monoliths, and we get a lot of that actually in Bloomington, a lot of, I mean, I don't know, look at North College right now, you know, or North Walnut, rather, along Miller showers Park, there's pros and cons to that type of development, you know, we do need more housing. But the point, more to the point, I guess, is that with alleys, it limits the lot size, you can have high-density multifamily housing in a type of form that is much more human-scale and activating and engaging for pedestrians. The other major concern without alleys for me is the number of potential drive cuts. Again, really degrades complete streets and pedestrian safety and connectivity and engagement. You know, we should be minimizing the number of drive cuts, you know, eliminating them entirely if possible. If we have alleys and all parkings in back, or we eliminate parking minimums in the UDO, which we should have done long ago from a sustainability perspective, not saying you can't build parking, but simply saying you don't have to, just like we don't say you have to build, you know, your home to be 5,000 square feet, we don't say that, because that would of course drive up costs. Same thing is true with parking minimums. So, there's some things here that even if we need to tweak UDO standards to make it more viable in line with our visions in the comprehensive plan, I think that should be part of the conversation. And again, we don't have a really strong or great way to engage in this question of public infrastructure and rights-of-way besides this process, maybe there are others that will come up, but for that reason, again, I'll be voting no if we vote tonight, but I don't think I would need another hearing to decide that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? All right, if there's no more comment, are we ready for the question?
I'd like to move that this question be postponed to the next regular session.
All right, that's been moved and seconded, but we need to have discussion, Mr. Lucas.
I would like to say, I think...
Yeah, I don't know that two weeks is enough time to resolve the concerns that I've heard from my several colleagues. I would, you know, be interested in, I hesitate to use the phrase postpone indefinitely, because that's tantamount to never allowing it to come back. I really don't know how long it should take, but I would like to postpone to a date later than two weeks from now. But, I mean, that's the, that's the, right now, postponing to third reading at the next session is the only option that I think I have. So, if anybody has any thoughts about it, I welcome them.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just say that the next session is fairly busy, so would a postponement to another time be, yes?
Can you advise us on perhaps when might be a more strategic time, a more strategic regular session to postpone this question to?
It really depends on how the April 20th meeting proceeds. The council tonight is scheduled to introduce two bond ordinances for first reading that are scheduled for discussion next week and a potential vote on the 20th alongside a resolution regarding the local income tax, again, for discussion next week and a potential vote on April 20th. So, depending on if those all are finished by April 20th, the May 4th meeting may be open, and I would suggest picking a specific date rather than postponing indefinitely, so if you'd like to revise your motion.
I appreciate that, I'd like to amend my motion to postpone to the date of May 4th.
All right, do we get a second for that?
Second.
All right, and with that, any other further discussion before we call the question on the recommendation? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
I just wanted to ask, what exactly is the purpose of postponing? So, is it to discuss with city staff and potentially come up with something different, or is it just for us to continue to consider this?
I think that, you know, the questions that several of us have raised are about, are we going to have this discussion every time that something involving this neighborhood comes up, funding requests for X or Y? And that this piecemeal approach to the council is not one that I think the council should embrace. I think that if the council, the council needs to decide to what extent it wants to have more direct involvement in the design of the old hospital site, and this would give us the time at least to consider that. I think that a meeting between the delegation of council members and the administration will be appropriate, but I don't actually have the answer right now. I'm looking for more time to think about what should a unified response from the council be if there is going to be this ongoing concern. So, that's why I'm postponing to a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilmember Smith?
Councilmember Rosenbarger asked, what would be the point of, you know, what are we looking for with a delay? And it seems the issue before us is that we're looking for a decision on the vacation of alleyways, not that we need a different kind of response from the administration on our involvement. So, I would probably vote no on this.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I do believe you were first, Joe.
Yes, Madam President, may I ask, Mr. Robinson, what impact this would have on, not that that's the only consideration, but I wanted to find out.
You know, impact as far as the timing to delay it, off the top of my head, I can't have one. Personally, I can't attend that night, I have a personal family issue. I'm having an operation that day, so I can't attend, but that doesn't mean that my staff can't do that. I'm a little perplexed to the point or intent of this, to delay. When I review the criteria that we're being asked to evaluate for alley vacations, this seems to be counterintuitive to the point of delay. So, I would like some clarity, I guess, from council members on the expectation of the delay and what we hope to arrive at. What I've heard is wanting the ability to participate in future alley vacations, that's something we can certainly work at as we continue to move out the design of this and other parts of the Hopewell neighborhood. Again, I think unilaterally across the city, each department, we don't give up right-of-way easily, this is something we don't typically do. This is a very unique circumstance, and so that's just something that, again, when I look at the criteria, in my opinion, I believe we met the criteria that council established in considering that, so I just question what's the intent and purpose of having that dialogue? If it's to have a seat at the table to redesign the neighborhood, that's something we're happy to work out, including alleys in the future, happy to discuss. Again, I just would like some clarity, clarification on that, thank you.
Councilmember Volan.
We had a seat at the table because we had a representative on planned commission, but we did not have a seat at the table at the design here that's being shown, now it's gone, I touched the wrong screen, but the design of showing the new blue, new rights-of-way compared to the old red ones that we'd be vacating. And the, you know, this is a more overarching point, we're always asked, again, the very thing that Mr. Robinson said, well, it's, as Mr. Smith said, it's just a, it's just an alley vacation. Well, maybe if the council had had a vote on the entire plan in the first place, this would be a matter of course, but as Mr. Flaherty said, this is the first time we've actually had direct influence over it. I, for one, I'm trying not to vote no to the alley vacation, but I think that, I mean, short of voting no now, I'm not sure how the vacation would come back, but the administration's directly tying this alley vacation to this design, and I'm questioning the design, I don't know how else to register my objection without actually voting no on the alley vacation. So, that's why I'm making the motion. If it doesn't pass, that's fine, but that's, those are my thoughts.
I guess in response to that, Councilmember Volan, the Hopewell master plan was a process, public process that went on for some time, there were some members of council that participated in that plan, the report was presented publicly. I find it hard to believe that there was no awareness of what was going on here, and that this was conceived in the dark back rooms of our offices. So, I guess my message to you is I wouldn't get too hung up on the renderings. These are renderings largely dropping blocks, squares on there, there's no, there's, we don't have a developer coming, we don't even own the land yet. These are purely to show a context of what the public improvements are, not what the buildings are. If council would like to put alleys in, we'd have to vacate these anyway, and we could reconsider putting alleys in other locations. That's looking at additional costs for the project, additional costs for public works to look at. These are things that we would need to evaluate moving forward. Again, I'm going back to the consideration of the vacation request and the question before you. I think the challenge that we're all struggling with is what's to come, and therefore, we want to have a seat at the table. I think, you know, we're more than happy to have these discussions moving forward and to have information about what those trade-offs are with the new alleys, with future alleys, with the other improvements. So, I hope that addresses your concern. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims.
Thank you, and I want to thank Councilmember Piedmont Smith, she asked a question about staff that I was going to, I wanted to get the input there. But my comment, and I think there's been some very good questions raised with regard to council input, and I think we should take that into account moving forward. One of the things that we're asking for more time, one of the things that we did is that I've had an additional week because I attended, or we had this discussion in the committee meeting. And like Councilmember Flaherty, I don't think I need an extension of time in order to make a decision with some of the work that we've made. So, that's my comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other additional comment on the motion that's on the table? Councilmember Rallo.
Well, just to say that, you know, we're being asked to give something here, and we are unsatisfied in terms of what we've been shown in terms of the, there's a possibility for, a potential for monolithic streetscape, and I think Councilmember Flaherty made a good case for that and gives us, a lot of us concerned about that. This has been our council's first action really on this process since we've, you know, we began it. I think it would be helpful to explore this more, and so I would support that. I don't see any harm in having another hearing. Doesn't sound like the developers, we don't even have a developer, we don't even own the property. We're in the very early stages of this, it seems that we could, we have latitude to have this discussion. I think it would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll on the question on the table, which is to delay, have a second reading on May the 4th? Is that correct? Did I word that?
Into the third reading on May the 4th.
Yeah. Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
No.
Scambalori?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
All right, and that bails 2-2-7. Three.
Three to six.
Three to six. Maybe I didn't hear that vote. All right, so, moving on to the question before us, which is to deal with ordinance 22-05, do we have any further discussion on that? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, just a quick follow-up clarification on my motivations for voting no tonight, and in light of somewhat Mr. Robinson just shared, I do want to clarify, it's not the renderings that I'm concerned with, it is the public improvements that I'm concerned with. And regarding the point that we'd have to vacate these anyway, these alleys, even if we were to plat and allocate and acquire additional right-of-way, I agree with that point, but that should be done as part of a comprehensive set of actions. We've just acquired right-of-way and platted these streets, and we should be doing the same things with alleys. So, I don't want to vacate the alleys now, which requires council action without a plan to add additional, or a plan that we've weighed in on. I realize there's a cost to that, I think it's worth it. I think the infrastructure is worth it. I think it's a hundred-year-plus investment in the city, as the mayor sometimes reminds us, and I think getting it right and replicating the very successful scale of historic urban form is the right call in this part of the city, and it dismays me that the plan really doesn't do that. Finally, regarding our guidance on this particular question, we consider current status, access to the property, it's not really relevant here, and then we consider necessity for growth of the city, including four components, future status, or the future public, potential for public utilization of these rights-of-way, and I think that's an... for public utilization of these rights-of-way. And I think that's an open question here. Second, proposed private ownership utilization, it's irrelevant. We don't have any proposed utilization yet. Compliance with regulations, also irrelevant. Relation to plans, the relation of vacation with the master plan, thoroughfare plan, neighborhood plans, or any other special studies that might apply. And here's kind of the crux of it as well, because, you know, the plan was never approved. The council didn't weigh in. We participated, but we didn't weigh in. I don't know if this was a decision of the department ultimately, if it was a decision of the consultants, and it was an oversight. I'm not sure, but I don't generally approve of zero alleys in the entire hospital redevelopment site, and I didn't approve that plan. So in the context of voting on this vacation in relation to the plans, I think that's a relevant bit of information as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any additional last comment? All right. At this time, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. We will call the question on ordinance 22-05.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
And Volin?
All right. That fails four to five. Correct? Did I get that correct?
Yes.
All right. At this time, we are ready to move on.
And for ordinance 22-06, be introduced and read by the clerk, by title and synopsis only.
Second.
And will everyone say, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, and will the clerk please roll? Please read.
Ordinance 2206, to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection, to establish a historic district regarding the Johnsons-Creamery Historic District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled The List of Designated Historic Districts in Order to Designate Johnsons-Creamery as a Historic District. The Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, after a public hearing on March 10, 2022, recommended that the structure be designated historic with a rating as notable. This rating was based upon certain historic and architectural criteria set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 8.08.101E entitled Historic District Criteria. Local designation will provide the protection needed to ensure that this property is preserved. Your due pass recommendation was 600, and your due pass recommendation for amendment two was 240.
And for ordinance 22-06, be adopted?
Second.
Thank you. And with us this evening... With us this evening to present is Mr. Zodi.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to recognize my fellow staff members from the city. Gloria Colombrania, our program manager with Historic Preservation, and Daniel Dixon with City Legal, as well as Beth Kate, our Corporation Counsel. So, we'd like to know the will of the council here on how you want us to proceed this evening. I was going to give you an update on where we are, since there had been some action prior to last week's committee of the whole, then thereafter, prior to this meeting. And we also have the presentation that we would normally give, so I want to just maybe give you my update, and then if that's the will of the council, then we can, I'll turn it over to Ms. Colombrania, and we'll go from there. We do appreciate the council's consideration of this issue as we've gone through the moving parts, particularly as it relates to the smokestack on the Johnson-Creamery property. The question before you tonight, obviously, is whether to designate the Johnson-Creamery property, which we do believe is historic, and Gloria will point that out. Just to sort of restate where we are, and why we've moved this issue in the manner in which we have, is first, in the interest of public safety, with the issues around the smokestack, the unsafe order the city issued. We've worked with the owners and the Historic Preservation Commission over the last couple of weeks. And then, of course, the second is making sure that we have a historic property here in the city, very close to our downtown core, if not in it, that is protected and is under the same scrutiny that other locally designated properties certainly are. So, last week, the Historic Preservation Commission did approve a certificate of appropriateness, which would allow for the smokestack to be reduced in height to 60 feet. That COA, as we call them, the certificate of appropriateness, was approved without a condition. Some of you may have known that discussion was going on, and that was approved without a condition. And what you have before you tonight is a map. There is also an amendment, which I'll defer back to the council for any consideration there, but you do have a map, as passed by the Historic Preservation Commission, with a resolved smokestack issue pending the council's action tonight on the designation of the property. So we'll leave it there. If it's the will of the council, I'll turn it over to Ms. Colombrania for a presentation there, and then we'll be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome to Ms. Colombrania.
Good evening, everybody. If you can give me one second while I share my screen?
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, that's the whole screen. Let me try again. Here we go. Well, good night, council... Hello, everybody, council members. Thank you for having me here. I'm Gloria Colombrania, the Historic Preservation Program Manager, and I'm going to give you a recap, and for those who weren't here last week, a little bit of background on the Johnson-Creamery, the building that's being nominated tonight. So located on 400 West 7th Street, the Johnsons-Creamery was built in 1914, at least the original part, and then it was incremented in size over time until 1951 by the Johnson Brothers. This building, as John Zodi stated, is rated, or I think, no, was originally stated as, it's notable, the owners are Peerless Development. The Historic Preservation Commission is nominating it. The process began in March. As John Zodi already stated, there is some urgency with the situation. However, that said, I'm just presenting the original HPC-proposed boundary, so that you can have it for context. The boundary doesn't occupy the entire lot. There is, the parking lot north of the smokestack is part of the property right now. However, the priority at this moment, and in order to have some sort of conciliation with the owners, was to make sure that the Creamery and the smokestack were protected, but allowed the owners to be able to develop on the site as well. This is a very complicated lot. There is a lot of moving pieces involved. However, even with this proposed boundary, the new project still, there's still a few feet that are within it. So that's something for you, as council members, to consider in a little while through amendment. However, this is the boundary that was approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, after a lot of back and forth as well, because there is a lot of, there was a lot of desire to make sure that as much as possible of this property be protected. Part of the reason is that this site represents two, or three of the, sorry, it's late, three of the local historic district criteria on the historic site. It, historic aspect, it exemplifies the cultural, political, economic, social, and historic heritage of the community. It also has very unique location and physical characteristics that represent Bloomington. And finally, it also represents the building environment of its specific architectural style. So just to go over that very, very quickly, this building provides a visual history, even the way that it grows, even the way that it's kind of a hodgepodge of other structures. It represents the history of technology, of architecture, of engineering, and of foodways, not just in Bloomington, but in the United States. It's a wonderful example of all these technologies that started at the early 20th century and kept changing and kept changing. It originally had a giant icebox, because it supplied the ice for all of Bloomington's iceboxes. So they would harvest ice water in winter and keep tons of that in this space and keep it cool, so that was more efficient to just harvest it in winter when the temperature was very low, and that supply would last throughout the year for all of Bloomington's iceboxes. These would be taken along with milk, pasteurized milk, which pasteurized milk was the greatest new technology in the 1910s, and so that was something they started to implement. They had already been selling ice cream and butter. So you see all of these changing technologies. When the refrigerator, the electric refrigerator with its plug came into play, the icebox was eliminated, and suddenly they had a bunch of square footage that wasn't needed anymore. And so the interior program of this factory continued to change. They would take ice cream and milk and other produce to people's houses. They hired 100 people, about 100 employees at its peak, being Bloomington's fourth-largest employer at one point, after the university, the stone, you know, stone work, and the showers factory. So they were the fourth-largest employers. They took the ice cream to people's, and milk, sorry, I'm thinking of ice cream, hyper-focused on that right now, but they would take all of these vital food products to people's houses, and even the fall of the ice cream, factory of the Johnsons factory is part of this history of foodways in the United States. They closed operations in the 1980s, when bigger factories and bigger supermarkets were conglomerating and bringing food in from different parts of the United States, so ice, milk and other dairy products could be processed many counties away. They didn't have to be so local. So, yeah, from beginning to end, this place and space really traces the history of Bloomington's industrial spaces. And even, I would also argue, in the last 30 years after it was closed, it also traces how these buildings changed from being industrial to being office spaces. The 1990s, when the building and the smokestack was included in the National Register, it was recognized at a national level for its historic importance, was also a time when it was being programmatically changed from an abandoned factory into office spaces, very much like the space we are in right now. So finally, I just wanted to mention that the smokestack, even with its impending reduction, does tell part of that history. It's the second smokestack in that space. The original one was 240 feet, and it was giant compared to this one, which is, which was perhaps 178 feet at one point. It's definitely 140 feet roughly right now, and it's probably going to go down to 60 feet very soon, but it's still a remaining part of that history of that industry at one point, and a part of the visual landscape of Bloomington. So thank you very much. And, yeah, so here are some more images. And if you look very carefully, you can see the giant smokestack dwarfing the current one in 1949. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we are concluded with the presentation, so we go to council for any questions you may have. And seeing no, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
But do you want to have questions first?
Oh, you do have to move the amendment.
Yeah. I would like to move Amendment 3 to ordinance 2206.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded, and please explain.
So this amendment was not discussed at Committee of the Whole. It is, the purpose is to amend the boundary of the proposed historic district, to refine the demarcation between what is intended to be two separate parcels in the future. So it, the main goal is to bring the northern boundary a little bit closer to the building, so that the proposed new multifamily building does not encroach on the historic district.
Do we have a visual for the new map?
Well, it was in the addendum, the first addendum to your council packet. I don't know if it can be called up at this point.
Someone else bring it up?
We have the ability to put it up via air media.
But I do want to mention that in this amendment, the boundaries would include the smokestack.
Right. I've seen it. I don't know if anyone else needs to see a visual. There we go.
Thank you.
All right. With that, with the visual up, are there any questions from council regarding the amendment, this is amendment two?
Three.
Three. Councilmember Scambalory?
Thanks. One of the points of discussion last week was how closely the boundary would actually hug the building, and does it give it enough of a buffer so that any new development won't encroach on it. I would ask that question now on this map about the smokestack. Does the smokestack need a little more clearance around it?
Just to clarify your question, Councilmember Scambalory, you're wondering if the smokestack, if we feel that the smokestack is protected adequately here? We do. We do. It does, just for members of the public who may have just seen this map for the first time, the base of the smokestack is included in the map, even though the top of it kind of moves over that line, but we do feel the map, as passed by the HPC, does move north enough of the smokestack to protect it. So that would be, if you're wondering about the western boundary, we don't have any concern about that. As I've seen, I'll defer to staff, the rest of staff, to see if we have had any concern. There hasn't been any discussion about the western boundary of the smokestack being compromised, and I think we're okay there.
All right. If Ms. Colombrania would like to reply?
Yeah. Hi, thank you. Thank you. So, just to clarify, there is some curb, some of the historic curb that would be outside of this space. However, that's part of the reality of this really complicated lot and everything, all the pieces that are happening. This version does include more than the last two amendments, and therefore, this staff does not oppose it.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions? Oh, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah. Forgive me for not knowing this. I should have asked this earlier, but we're looking at a designation in two dimensions. How far up does that extend? Does it, does historic designation extend into infinity? Is it for the height of whatever structure is currently on it, on that piece of land?
Are you talking about up?
Vertically, yeah.
Toward the sky?
Right.
We've discussed this. Maybe, I don't want to, I think we have a technical expert here. If you'll allow me to confer with them, I will try to get that answer for you, because I don't know that answer. And Gloria, do you, do you know how far up it would go?
In other words, does it cover the airspace as well?
Does it cover the airspace?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, Councilmember.
We can't hear anything.
Yeah, I was just, sorry about that.
I'm sorry about that. Yes.
So, just to confirm my understanding, a historic designation covers airspace above that, above that land as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Double yes. All right.
You stopped us there, Councilmember. It stopped me, anyway.
Councilmember Volin, did you have a hand up, and then Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah, I was just going to ask about the curb that Ms. Colombrania was talking about. Can you show us where, and this yellow dotted outline, the curb is being excluded? Can you tell us more about the curb? Can you describe it? How concerned should we be about this part being left out?
So, yes, that corner that the mouse is on top of? So yes, that corner that the mouse is on top of, that's.
I can't see. I can, can we use a different description?
Sorry, it's easier to see from, we have the bigger.
Is it near the smokestack? Is it near the northeast corner?
Yes, just west of the smokestack.
OK, so this is, why is this curb historic? What, is it made of brick or something? What is it?
It's not, it's not of what architects would call a noble material, but that was never really the purpose of the factory, of the creamery. It is just part of the original landscaping and the functional exterior area of the creamery. The reason that it's being excluded is because the new construction project that the owners are proposing is on top of it.
OK, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. With this amendment, I just wanted to ask about the shed that is next to the smokestack, because it's like in the middle of the property line then.
Yes, that shed was designed for, to supply for the AT&amp;T infrastructure, and it's part of the AT&amp;T history of the smokestack, of the very, very recent 20 teens history.
So would the, I mean, what happens when the line is in the middle of a structure?
So that structure will probably need to have some sort of, it will probably be removed. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the owners will do to it. It's a non-contributing structure.
Pardon me?
Yes?
Am I able to speak? This is Michael Cordero.
Representative of the property owner, Michael Cordero, is on Zoom and may have more to add to this.
So that's the voice from afar that we just heard, OK.
If the council wants to hear.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I had my hand raised on the Zoom function. I figured it would be helpful if I spoke to this piece. The intention, I believe, would be to remove that shed. It does house the equipment for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is leaving. And, you know, our understanding was that it, you know, it was an addition, not made in any historical context, but ultimately blocks the view of the more significant historical building. So that piece was intended to be coming down with part of the, the partial demolition of the smokestack. I also wanted to note that the smokestack view and protection does actually extend further to the east and to the north, because there is a box culvert that runs through this property, actually runs right underneath that shed. And it is very close to the base of the smokestack. The city has an easement along the entire length of that smoke, or the box culvert. So nothing can be built on top of that easement ultimately. So that does provide further protection. You know, ultimately, it's that, then the property line, then the B-line. So there really will be nothing built to the north and east of the smokestack. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cordero, for that clarification. Is that satisfactory? OK. Are there additional council questions? We are now to a point where we are to public comment, correct? And so at this time, we will have people come to the podium who are in chambers this evening, or raise a hand in the raised hand function in your Zoom, and begin with, who is here in chambers? If you will. Yes. Pardon me?
This is on Amendment Three, correct?
Yes, this is on Amendment Three. This is the new revision of the map that we're looking at.
I, do we have the capacity to show some slides?
OK.
Yeah, there you go. I can see them. So I don't really have any opinion on the merits of the particular project, but I thought it might be useful to do a little historical exercise where we go back and look at a.
Excuse me, can you talk directly into the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing you.
OK.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
OK. So just got five slides here, should be pretty quick. The first one is the Ritz Theater, as it nears completion in 1928. It's a very nice example of, you know, Romantic Revival-style theater. 1928 wasn't a good year. 1929, of course, we had the Depression, and things changed a little bit. Next slide, please. This is a line drawing from 1978, and you can see the Von Lee. The theater's been renamed. The barber shop is still called the Ritz, and you can see Little Mexico there, the house that the theater was built around. This is about the time that I came to Bloomington, and this is how I remember the Von Lee. Next slide, please. Ouch. Economics changed. They needed two screens to operate a theater downtown, so they demolished the house and the barber shop, and we got a brutalist concrete block wall next to our Romantic Revival Theater. Not the best look. Next slide, please. Here's from the Big Dig in 2005. You get another look at the concrete block wall there with two little canisters to break up that huge expanse of masonry. And then today, in the next slide, things look a little better. I bought the Von Lee and redesigned the property. To my way of thinking, this looks much better than that masonry wall. And I just wanted to show you these as an example of what's at stake. Context is important. I'm in favor of the larger boundary for the historic district so that we don't get any kind of mismatch right next to the historic structure. In this very chamber, two nights ago, one of the candidates in the forum said she came to Bloomington and fell in love with it at first sight. It's hard to assess the value of the built environment on that kind of interaction, but I certainly think that the built environment is part of that, and I would encourage you to vote no on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Come right up to the podium then. Sign in, please.
My name's Duncan Campbell, and I'm an advisory member to the Preservation Commission. And I should say that I don't speak for all of the members of the Preservation Commission. I'm speaking for myself, but as I said last week, I have a lot of experience with these things. And this is a little bit unique, this boundary line complication, because, well, there are two sort of ways this is done. When you have a single listing property, typically the property line is the boundary. In this case, the property line is the boundary of the National Register District. In the meantime, a petitioner has come forward to a city, has gotten permission to build an apartment building in the north half of this lot, basically building it on the National Register, part of the National Register lot, which is legal under National Register regulations. Whether you think that's actually appropriate or not, that is the situation that the commission is dealing with currently. And I argued last week that these boundaries need to be protected in order to have some line where encroachment is stopped, so that we have a regulatory boundary that we can act within to respect the building itself. It's my opinion that this slight adjustment of the boundary to the south still allows that to happen. And it is a convenience for the already permitted new building, even though it's not on the site, because the only part of that building that was within that boundary that we proposed originally was the facade of the very south-facing part of that building. So that would have, that would have meant for the owner that the design of that facade had to come under the jurisdiction of the Preservation Commission, but that facade only. So we have this sort of vertical line of interface that would be very difficult to regulate without regulating the entire structure, which we wouldn't have jurisdiction over unless the map included the entire property. And we're not proposing that it include the entire property. If this were all, happened a priori, and no building had been permitted to be there and so on, we would have proposed that the boundary be the entire property, because that's the standard way to go. However, in campus arrangements, like the showers complex, each of the showers buildings is bounded by its own outline, basically, and the historic oversight doesn't include the property in between. The advantage of that is when they developed the new showers buildings to the north, or the other showers buildings to the north, they had some leeway without oversight from the Preservation Commission about how to put in the streets and the landscaping and the lights and other kinds of choices to make it more useful. And that was an agreement between the commission, basically, and the city of Bloomington, that we really cared about the buildings, but we weren't particularly concerned about the infrastructure in between. So in this case, I favor this boundary adjustment, this amendment, because I think it cleans, it cleans the line between the new building and the old building, and still is far enough away from the north face of the Johnson Creamery Building to allow the Preservation Commission to do its work.
Thank you, and you are at your time, so we appreciate your position on the amendment. Thank you. And next up. Do we have hands on Zoom that are up while we are waiting for a sign in?
There are two that just popped up.
All right. We will proceed with our chambers, people.
You ready?
Yes.
OK, good evening. My name's Karen Duffy, and over the past several weeks, I've presented statements to you, as well as to the HPC, in support of local designation for Johnson's Creamery. On those occasions, I spoke on behalf of the Near West Side Neighborhood Association Board of Directors. Tonight, I'll speak simply for myself, drawing upon parts of those statements and my own observations. I will start with a confession that I misunderstood the amendment when I saw it this morning. I, maybe I couldn't get it big enough, and I thought it excluded the smokestack. So I was prepared to, my comments are prepared to, were prepared to oppose it, but I am going to just modify that, and I will be supporting it. But before I get to even get to that, I want to thank you all for the general interest that you have shown in designating this important site, the Johnson Creamery, which has long been on the National Register of Historic Places, but has yet to receive formal local recognition and protective status. I truly appreciate the seriousness with which you've listened and responded to public comments like our association to this date, and I hope you're in that same frame of mind tonight, after a long night already, as you prepare to cast your final votes on this issue. So I'm happy to fully support the nomination of Johnson's Creamery, as prepared by hand and approved by the HPC, including its narrative of the site's historical and architectural significance, and the Amendment Three map that defines its boundary, giving some space around the building, which the HPC, which would give them the space they need to protect it, and would include the 60-foot smokestack, which we fully understand and agree has to be reduced to that for public safety. So I will just ask you to do the same in support of those, the ordinance and the amendment that's been proposed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. And next to the podium. We'll work on this podium.
Good evening. I'm Olivia Dorfman from the Near West Side, and I will keep this short and sweet. I'm here tonight because I really, really hope that you will all vote to save the Johnson Creamery Building and its landmark smokestack, such an important part of the Bloomington skyline. It's one of only a few 20th-century industrial buildings that survived demolition in the 1950s. We just have so little left, and I think it just, it's really important for children to see what we came from and understand where we're going, and for that reason, I'm all for preserving this important piece of Bloomington's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorfman. And I see no more commenters in chambers, so let's get to the two hands raised in Zoom.
We have three minutes now. First is Janice Sorby, who should be able to unmute.
All right, Ms. Sorby, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jan Sorby, and I'm here tonight to ask you to support the local designation of the Johnson Creamery site, and to endorse a map that was prepared by the Hand Department and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, and reject the amendment of the tighter, closer northern boundary. Trust your HPC. They understand the importance of the historic context, and they understand the guidance for truly protecting the site. The guidance from the Secretary of Interior stresses the importance of having sufficient space around the building so that it can be protected from possible intrusions. The more important the building, the more space is needed to be included in the district. They talk, the Secretary of the Interior emphasizes the high value of protecting the view shed. They stress that without the protection, the integrity of the building is seriously compromised. I want to talk just briefly about what the Johnson Creamery Building meant in the 40s. In the 1940s, people had just lived through the deepest decline in the worldwide economy, and then they found themselves in the middle of a world at war. During the Depression, millions of people had lost their jobs in farms, and food was scarce. The Johnson Creamery and the smokestack that defined the skyline was regarded as a symbol of hope and optimism toward the future. It meant that people would have jobs and would live in greater comfort. They would have more and safer food. The 40s, the industrialization and technology were seen as a path to a better life, and this structure really, really symbolizes that at that time. And this is a good story. It's a good story that needs to be understood into the future. And to that end, really please protect that view shed and accept the map that your Hand Department prepared and that your HPC endorsed. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. And I will just remind any remaining speakers on Zoom that we are discussing Amendment Number Three, which is not the same maps as we were discussing in the Committee of the Whole. This is a new configuration that conforms to the needs, I think, of everyone that we've heard from tonight. So who do we have next to speak to Amendment Three, which is a newly drawn map, not from last week?
The next person is the person on screen named Cynthia B., who should be able to unmute and state her, their full name for the record.
All right, thank you. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Cynthia Bradheim from Prospect Hill, and I'm just chiming in because I have spent a lot of time on the B-line, and I've spent a lot of time in the showers parking lot. And the view from there with the artwork from Dale Enoch and that wide-open space of that parking lot and that odd, large chimney that we have is really important. The idea of backing up a large apartment building to the B-line, making it so that there's no view except for a building, just is, no way I would want to greet the many, many people who come to the farmer's market on Saturdays, or the many, many people who walk downtown and leave down. walk downtown and leave downtown. So I'm hoping that you'll accept the original request to keep the boundary a little larger around the building and around the chimney. And if there's any way they can encourage swallows to use that chimney, that would be an added perk to our Beeline passing, people passing by, and also to anybody who comes back and forth to the city building. I think it augments our downtown, makes it more interesting, and is just one more tip of the hat to the lovely character of our very sweet and pedestrian-friendly downtown. So I'm asking you to please not accept Amendment Three, even though it now includes the smokestack. I'm hoping that you'll have the larger protections originally sponsored by or recommended by Hand and the HPC. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bradheim. And who do we have next?
Next, we have the person on the screen named Natalia Galvin.
All right. Ms. Galvin, this is on Amendment Three, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Natalia Galvin. I'm a member of the Near West Side Neighborhood Association, and stand with them in asking for a local historical designation. But just speaking for myself, I would like to thank you for this tough amendment, especially after attending over 15 hours of meeting on this topic. The rendering, just looking on the website over at Peerless, the rendering of 335 West 8th Street always seems to, already seems to assume a tight boundary line on that site. Like Mr. Campbell said in previous meetings from the HPC, you wouldn't build an apartment complex on the courthouse lawn. And like Ms. Sorby stated in a comment at Committee of the Whole, and alluded to, or and stated today, too, the U.S. Department of the Interior has weighed in on new construction within the boundaries of historic properties. Under the Technical Preservation Services banner, their guidance says, quote, "Protecting the historic setting and context of a property, including the degree of open space and building density, must always be considered when planning new construction on a historic site. For example, a historic building traditionally surrounded by open space must not be crowded with dense development." And I took that just from their website. I think Mr. Calder kind of spoke to that with his Von Lee presentation. Historic landscapes and significant view sheds must be preserved. So while I think the council member for their amendment, this is a pretty tough one. So I guess I thank you for protecting the smokestack, but I guess this is a really tough issue. So I will be eager to see how you vote on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. All right. If there are no more public comment, let's come, oh, is there?
I believe that Michael Cordero would like to speak.
All right. Thank you. Is he unmuted? Okay.
He is.
Mr. Cordero, are you there?
Hi, everybody. I thought somebody was before me, sorry. Thank you, everyone, for, you know, for council members for your time, the HPC and city staff. This has been, you know, a long process for everybody involved, and just want to let everyone know that we appreciate everybody's time and consideration to, you know, a very important matter. I did want to speak in support of this amendment, and, you know, just let everybody else know that we, this building that we do intend to develop has been approved by Planning Commission. We have been spending, you know, a lot of time and effort on, you know, that front as well. And the new amendment, you know, we tried to take everybody's consideration of the view shed and provide as much separation, I'm sorry, that is my daughter, as much separation as we could while eliminating that conflict that Duncan alluded to. So just wanted to, again, speak in favor of the amendment. Thank everybody, and thank you for your consideration. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero, and good night to your young one. All right. If that's the end of public comment, we're back to council for final comments on Amendment Three. Are there any comments? And seeing none, let's go ahead and have the roll called on Amendment Three. Sorry. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And that passes eight to one. Thank you for Amendment Three. And now we move on to Ordinance 22-06 as amended, and we are back to council for any final comments. And seeing no final comment from council, we are ready to call the question on Ordinance 22-06 as amended.
Just a point of clarification. Does the council want to go to the public? I don't believe the council offered public comment on the ordinance as amended.
Oh, okay. We heard a lot of comment on the whole thing during the Amendment Three, but is there any additional public comment with respect to the entire designation?
Members of the public participating via Zoom would use the raise hand function to indicate their intention to speak on the ordinance as amended.
All right. And seeing no one from chambers now.
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Oh, Councilmember Volin has a comment before we...
Comment is over.
Yes, it's over.
Okay. Just want to thank my colleagues. It looks like that in the committee, some of the minor points were clarified and boiled down to a single amendment, so I'm appreciative of it. And I appreciate all the comments and input, especially that's come in from the neighborhoods. And I, you know, like, this still seems, Ms. Colom Bragna said, she is right, there were many moving parts here, but it still seems like a compromise has been found, so I'm looking forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Let's call the roll. Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes nine zero zero. We appreciate everyone this evening, and we are now ready to move on to legislation for first reading.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 22-12 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-12 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water Rate Adjustment. The synopsis is as follows. The synopsis amends the rates and charges in Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water to reflect the repeal of the utilities receipt tax in compliance with Indiana Code 8124.2.
Thank you. And before we move on to the next, Mr. Lewis, do you wish to make a comment at this point regarding Ordinance 22-12?
I do. Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and apologize for the omission of this ordinance and its supporting materials in the packet that was distributed last Friday. The council packet typically includes legislation coming up at the next regular, at the following Wednesday meeting, and due to just the oversight of myself, this ordinance and its materials were not included. So they were prepared and posted and distributed this afternoon. I don't believe there are any procedural problems associated with going ahead with its introduction tonight, but because that was outside of our normal practice, I did want to acknowledge that and apologize. This ordinance is scheduled for discussion next week, so hopefully folks have plenty of time to review it before that meeting. So thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. I don't know that we have any more need of clarification for that, so we'll just move on with legislation for first readings. Well, this, of course, is going to be referred to the Committee of the Whole next week.
Shall I proceed?
Yes.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 22-13 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-13 authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana General Obligation Bonds Series 2022 to provide funds to finance the cost of certain capital improvements, including costs incurred in connection with and on account of the issuance of the bonds, and appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of such bonds, all for the purpose of promoting climate change preparedness and implementing equity and quality of life improvements for all city residents.
Thank you.
The synopsis?
Please.
Is as follows. This ordinance approves the issuance of general obligation bonds of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, under Indiana Code 364619 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,800,000 for the purpose of financing longer-term capital projects and investments throughout the city in order to promote climate change preparedness and implement equity and quality of life for all city residents.
Thank you. And again, referred to the Committee of the Whole next week.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 22-14 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-14 approving the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District Bonds Series 2022 to provide funds to finance the cost of certain capital improvements for park purposes, including costs incurred in connection with and on account of the issuance of the bonds, all for the purpose of promoting climate change preparedness and implementing equity and quality of life improvements for all city residents. The synopsis is as follows. Sorry. This ordinance approves the issuance of special taxing district bonds by the City of Bloomington Park District under Indiana Code 3610435 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,800,000 for the purpose of financing longer-term capital projects and investments for park purposes throughout the City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District in order to promote climate change preparedness and implement equity and quality of life for all.
All right. Thank you. Again, referred to the Committee of the Whole next week. And with that, we move to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here in chambers who would like to make a comment, or anyone at home on Zoom, now would be the time.
Members of the public participating via Zoom can indicate their interest in speaking by using the raise hand function, or they can send a message in the chat to the meeting host indicating their intention to speak.
All right. Thank you. And I see no one from chambers jumping up, so...
There are no raised hands, and...
If there is no one on Zoom, we will now move to a discussion on our council schedule coming up.
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder, the council has a work session scheduled for this Friday. At the moment, there are no items of legislation that will be ready for preview, but at least a number of council members have expressed interest in hearing from the Director of IT on a potential meeting timer solution beyond the Blue Sky Timer app that we've been using that integrates into Zoom. So Rick Dietz may be available to come speak about potential upgrades to council chambers for those interested. And at the last work session, we had a slightly impromptu discussion on hybrid meetings generally. So we thought if members are interested in discussing how hybrid meetings are going and any feedback in more detail this Friday, in conjunction with hearing from Rick Dietz, might be an opportunity to do so. So I'd like to see if members are interested in going ahead with that work session. So if you could indicate whether you'd like to attend.
Show of hands, if you're interested in having a discussion on those kind of two general topics. Raise your hand. I will certainly attend. Looks like we have at least three, so that should be a sufficient number to have a discussion. Oh, not you.
I can only attend via Zoom. I prefer if it was a later date, but if it happens on Friday, then I'll attend.
Is that an opportunity for Councilmember Volin to attend?
Yes, the work session would be accessible via Zoom, although if it's more convenient to hold that discussion at a later work session, that's the only item. I don't think there is any reason to hold it this Friday in particular.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does that change the number of hands going up? If Councilmember Volin, who I think is pretty integral to this discussion, would rather have it at a later work session?
I would prefer it if we could have it any other time, but just that tomorrow I'm out of town, or Friday, Wednesday.
Well, I think given there's not a whole lot of hands raised, why don't we just go ahead and cancel the work session? Is that everybody, is that okay with everybody?
If there's a motion to that effect, it would be... I move to cancel the work session on Friday, the 8th.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. That work session is canceled. Is that all we need to address?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.